All right, I would like to call tonight's planning commission meeting to order. Uh, I will start with approval of the agenda. Uh, actually, yeah, we're good. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposition? All right, seeing none, the approval, the agenda is approved. Item three, approval of the minutes from March eighth, twenty twenty-two with an asterisk.
Can I make, no, no, I want to move to approve them, but I want to talk about it.
Well, motion in a second, then we can talk, right?
Yep. Motion in a second?
Yes.
All right.
So, what we have been provided, um, as minutes until...
So, for the, for the record, uh, Mr. Dana made the motion and, uh, this was a motion in a second.
Yeah.
Because I realized we didn't do that over first.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I was just starting.
Go for it.
Um, so, um, we were at first provided, just like basically, um, minute by minute at the booths. Uh, we were not actually provided a transcript, uh, or we were not provided minutes, nor were we provided the transcript, um, that was then available, um, later today. So, I'm moving to approve the minutes because I actually read them. I read through the transcript, um, and I'm ready to say that except for some minor, uh, transcription errors, that it was correct. The only thing I want to say about it, though, is that, like, that's not minutes. And I understand you were saying that this is a city council, um, directive to use this software, but I just want to put out there that it would be very difficult for the public later on to, to come back and like research some of these cases or, or understand what, what fully happened, because there's just so much noise with the transcript, there's just so much there, so. I just wanted to put that comment into the record.
And I want to say I can't support approval because I have no idea what the minutes are.
So, one of the things that, um, the, the, because of the length of time that goes into preparing minutes, it was days of work, um, what council moved forward was action minutes on the assumption that, that you could go and look at the recording, since we have direct recording. Um, it's, it's, it's difficult when all you have is a list and then a recording in a separate place. I know that Heather's been working at council to try to provide links to portions of, so at least if you click on an agenda item, you can go, is it possible? And I don't know how much work is involved in that, because that way, at least if you see like, this is an agenda item about Al's land, you can click on it and it brings you that portion of the video, so that you, you don't need to scroll back through the, you know, and, and I think that's the, the thought is that a video is, is the direct recording of our, of our, um, meetings. At least, is there a hybrid way that we can?
Well, but I would argue those aren't minutes, the transcription is not, um, minutes. Minutes take a long...
So, to quote Robert's rules, they are not transcripts of the proceedings.
Right. So, so even though I am voting to, or I am moving to approve, or seconding the motion to approve the minutes, I'm doing that because I read a transcript, I did not read minutes. So, um, and, and I totally get it that it takes days and days to prepare proper minutes, and I do understand why there would be, you know, a lot of reason to choose software that, that does it this way. Um, I just, we also didn't have it available to us until three thirty P M., so.
Maybe a third rail is we use the transcript and we live it down to minutes. That's also an option, because then it is easier to read. It is a synopsis as opposed to a direct transcript, then it also is less labor intensive for staff.
Well, and I think that city council and staff are trying to work through what's a workable model. I mean, we went from super resource intensive minutes to this, which is kind of on the other end of the spectrum, and, and I think that at least in council, we're trying to find a way that's somewhere in the middle, but I, so I think it's to be continued, because we're trying to find a less resource intensive way than the traditional way.
Are the reflections not on the community development stuff?
Not at all, no.
On the contracts?
Yeah.
All right. So, we've had discussion, uh, any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
Yes.
Nay.
So, two, two against. All right. Uh, moving on, public comments related to items not on the agenda. So, if there's anyone in the crowd who would like to, uh, share their thoughts or comments with the planning commission, feel free to come up to the podium. Again, these are for items not on tonight's agenda. Let the record reflect that nobody in the crowd moved. And we will move on to business item number five, reports from commissions, boards, committees, and staff. We will start with Dr. Prithridge.
So, I guess I'll just report on, um, the climate action steering committee, which has been working to develop an outline of the climate action plan, which is part of our commitment to carbon neutrality through the, um, global covenant of mayors. So, the, the steering committee met, looking at models from other places, it's really kind of an outline of goals and objectives, um, that we shared, uh, with MKSK as part of the, um, comprehensive planning process. But I think that some of those things that deal with planning, we have to think about how we're going to relate to this board, because there are some goals related to planning, and, and I think right now they're high level goals, they're objectives, but I think it would be really good discussion for boards that, that's their domain, to, to, to figure out how would we implement that, so that's just coming up.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bracken?
Sure. The environmental commission, uh, sent on, um, some recommendations to council around pollinator-friendly, uh, lawns and other areas, um, public areas as well, and that's going to be discussed at a work session coming up.
Thank you. Ms. Rosenbauer?
Um, housing advisory commission did not meet last, uh, last month.
All right. I had a hurled nod, Mr. Dana.
I can say that the Economic Development Committee, the commission itself, I cannot report on, but what I can report on is the activity of the, of the executive director, Seth Koppinbaker, who has been, in my judgment, is innovatively sponsoring economic development initiatives. So, Mr. Koppin, Mr. Koppinbaker is, is going forward with economic development agendas on behalf of the city. I want that simply to be a matter of record. If you would like, I can point to Mr. Koppinbaker there, and we're glad he's with us, that's all.
Thank you, sir. Uh, historic architecture, uh, does not have a meeting tomorrow, but, uh, I, I think it's up note, uh, the large building across the way that is, uh, starting to take noticeable form, um, that's something that the, the city staff and the H I P C have worked really hard, uh, with, uh, well, a lot of folks, and, uh, it's just nice to see that coming to fruition, considering it was a grass lot for, uh, a few years. Um, we do, there is one thing, and, and if, uh, Mr. Perry could elaborate a little bit more, there are some opportunities from both a historic, uh, history and an architectural standpoint, uh, conferences, um, for some of our folks, uh, at the city level. Uh, Mr. Perry's, uh, been very inclusive of the commission members, uh, those are coming up in July, um, so I don't have the details in front of me, so I'll actually defer the rest of my H I P C and just streamline any of your staff report.
Thank you. Yep, and I'll add to that, uh, Mr. Tare, there's a, a National Association of Alliance for Preservation Commissions is going to be in Cincinnati this year, which is really nice. Uh, it's only every two years, it's called the Forum, and it's a organization that is designed specifically to assist, uh, volunteer boards that are focused on historic preservation. And being in Cincinnati makes a great opportunity for, uh, preservation boards around the area to, uh, partner with other preservation boards and learn how they run their commissions and boards. Uh, and so several of us, I think, are going to be able to attend, it's in, uh, July seventeenth through twentieth, uh, downtown Cincinnati, and there'll be some walking tours and seminars that takes place over a three-day period. So, myself and, uh, I think Zach is also going to be attending part of it, and a couple, a couple of commission members, so we're excited to have that nearby in our backyard.
Uh, Mr. Boar, Mr. Perry, anything else you'd like to report?
Yeah, just a very short update on the, uh, Oxford Tomorrow Cooperative Plan. So, um, it's been a little while, but we did have our visioning workshop on April eighteenth, which, uh, many of you did attend, and, uh, that turned out to be a great event, we had a hundred and two total participants at that, uh, so heard from a lot of different folks, a lot of great feedback at that event, um, and also thank you to O B F once again for hosting, um, that event, allowing us to use their, their venue. Um, so, yeah, just, uh, stay tuned for some future updates, you can always visit our project website, it's oxfordtomorrow.org. Um, we don't have our next event scheduled as of yet, but if I had to take a wild guess, it'd probably be sometime June, I would guess, um, but as soon as those dates are arrived at, um, there will be some notifications that go out via email.
Thank you. All right, moving on to new, new business. P C twenty twenty-two dash one, uh, it's a major amendment from, to the two thousand nine conditional use of fifty-three oh-two University Park Boulevard, uh, for Tallawanna City Schools, and I'm not sure who's going to come up and speak on their behalf, so I will, um, accept a motion to adjourn to public hearing. Mr. Dana with the win, Dr. Prithridge with the second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Mr. Perry, you have the floor.
Thank you, good evening, everyone. So, at the March meeting was a discussion about a possible, uh, minor amendment for this project, and this has come back as a full conditional use application in form of a major amendment to the two thousand nine conditional use. We wanted to make sure for the public's benefit that we had that in there, that it's still an amendment to the previous approval for the, for the school, so this is a bus garage and maintenance facility that's intended to be for the Tallawanna City School District, and this will support the overall school district, but be located at the high school property. The overall high school property is a hundred and fifty-five acres, so it's a large property. Uh, this, this has been designed by Bear Becker, Shawna Tofelsky, uh, is here tonight as well on behalf of, uh, the school. So, you're probably familiar with, uh, this overall project, and because we looked at this in, uh, sufficient detail in March, I won't go through, uh, quite as much, but I will go through it in the sense of there are decision criteria that are more detailed than a minor amendment, because this would be considered a major amendment, which takes a recommendation to city council, to make an amendment to the two thousand nine conditional use. Anytime there is a school, a drive-through restaurant, any type of, uh, use that could have, that could need some special considerations to make sure that it fits within the area and does not have any impacts on the surrounding area, the conditional use process is for that, just for the public's benefit, I wanted to, uh, share that. So, the, the map there on the screen, uh, shows the, the location of the bus garage, where coming off of twenty-seven into University Park Boulevard, which is a public roadway, and then that turns into private property and into the driveway of the high school, and the bus garage, which is a relocated facility, is the proposal from the current location on Chestnut Street, which is being referred to as Chestnut Fields, the Miami parking lot that's nearby there, that area will be redeveloped into an intermodal station, uh, for Butler County Regional Transit, and so the bus facility and storage that's there now needs to find a new home, so that is what this, uh, project is about. This next slide shows the zoning, and you can see, uh, the area, subject area is R-one A, which is actually not an uncommon district for a school to be in, so that's the low-density single-family residential. You can also see some of the surrounding, uh, properties, the aviary, which was Indian Trace Apartments previously known as, and then the O I, or Office Industrial District, which is where the Kettering, uh, Medical Facility now, you can see that's built, which does not show up on the aerial photo here. And while I've got the screen here, you can, you may recall that there was, uh, an outreach made by the school to the property owner of the apartment complex there, the aviary, to actually hold a, uh, listening session if there was interest, and it turns out that there was no attendance, but the effort was made. This is a site plan that's in your packet, uh, what's not in the packet here is what's on the screen, where it's overlaid on the aerial photo, you can see it in context here. It's actually the same footprint that was presented in March, but as I said before, this is the, uh, the full process, uh, going through this recommendation to city council. There have been some minor changes that were made based on the feedback, so that process did help, even though, uh, it was essentially a denial of it being acceptable as a minor amendment, those comments that were provided were folded into the design for the major amendment, which you have in front of you tonight. Uh, this slide that zoomed up on a little bit closer, so you can see the detention basin, uh, that's to the, to the east or on the right, you can see there are two driveways, the in, uh, and the out, and you can see there's two parking lots, because it's designed to have, uh, staff and employee parking that is outside the secure area, and then buses, which would be inside the secure area. And while I've got the screen here, uh, you may recall there was discussion about, uh, the impacts of potentially noise, lighting, maybe even fumes, some discussion about what those impacts might be, how that could be mitigated, uh, in regards to the, the idling or the storage of the buses. Which brings me to the next slide, and there's additional landscaping that's been added, which was not on the plans, and also there was privacy slot screening added to what was already proposed to be a chain link fence, so there's a couple of different additional layers of, uh, mitigation there. It wouldn't be a hundred percent mitigation, because there would be some noise, even though it's not in a neighborhood, uh, but this would help have some effect on lessening that, and that's in addition to the vegetation that is intended to remain along the property lines, both on the north and the east. The easement, uh, was discussed as well, uh, there's an existing roadway easement that was actually approved by city council already earlier this year, uh, to be removed and replaced with an, with a new easement location, which would accomplish the same purpose in the spirit of the long-range transportation plan. The one that's shown here overlaying, uh, this, the site plan was recommended and approved to be relocated with the notion that the new bus garage facility would conflict with that, and so in order to maintain the same intent for potential connectivity in the future, even though it may be, it's not planned, it's not budgeted, there's no, there's nothing in the capital improvement plan or any state or federal funding, it, that is in the public interest to make sure that there is a potential connection there in the future. And then this next slide does show where that connection could be. It's actually, uh, a little bit shorter and would connect to the north, which could potentially provide a better, more feasible connection, uh, to the west, uh, across the river tracks, if this property were to be ever developed. The property to the west does have a conservation easement on it, so connecting, uh, through that property would be unlikely. So, while we're not discussing the merits of the easement itself tonight, since that decision has already been made, uh, we wanted to make sure that you were aware that that was something, uh, that was part of the overall project. This was a slide that was used with the city council discussion that shows the overall, uh, plan, some of the elements here, uh, don't actually align with reality, because of, at the time they were drawn, the school wasn't there, so that just shows you the outdated nature of the long-range transportation plan. But the point A to point B, from getting from the one side of the river tracks to the other, this, this easement would accomplish that. So, uh, with that in mind, um, I don't want to go through and read the staff report, um, but I, I can answer questions, I can go back through some of the discussion points that you had at the time, I think the main ones had to do with mitigating the, uh, any potential fumes, um, and lighting, any noise of the, of the area, and I think also, that's just the fact that, uh, staff's analysis of this was that this could be done as a minor because of the overall scope compared to the overall site at the bus garage, even though it is a large development, seventy-five hundred square foot building, parking of forty buses, half dozen staff, staff felt like that was within the scope of the overall high school site. Based on the discussion that you all had in March, that was not your finding, and we were fine with that, so, um, that's the main reason why we're back here tonight. So, uh, we do have some conditions of, that are in the spirit of the plans and the waivers that we recommend, the roadway easement being one, that needs to be recorded. The building permit has not actually been submitted yet, so there's, there is no reason to, um, to have that as a, as an issue, but before it is issued, that is something that administratively we need to accomplish. As far as parking lot curbing, you may recall, if you're familiar with the high school site, there, there is not any parking lot curbing, uh, because of the original design, our recommendation was to include that, so that has been done on portions of the site, not the entire site, at least in the areas where there could be some turning radius, uh, the vehicles where the people could possibly leave the drives and the parking, we wanted to make sure that there could be some, uh, prevention of that, uh, so they have agreed to that, but it would still be a waiver on portions of the parking area. Parking Lot Islands, uh, was another one as well, that is not, also not a feature of the, uh, existing high school site. There is significant trees and landscaping, uh, already existing and proposed to be new that would help to compensate for that, uh, and there is the, the issue of the height of the buses would have some potential conflicting with landscape trees that could be in those parking lot islands. And because of the preservation of the vegetation along the property lines that are actually outside the construction area, our recommendation is to waive the tree survey requirement, uh, with the condition that the trees that are shown on the plan, uh, would be planted. And that is our recommendation to, uh, pass that on as a, uh, recommendation for approval to city council. Happy to answer any questions or go back to any of the site plans, uh, if you'd like.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Perry? I do have one. On page nine, um, decision criteria, okay? Uh, basically it says the site is designed so that onsite traffic and traffic access accessing the site will not be appropriately impacted by movement of traffic, so on and so forth, and, uh, I've read your response. Um, my concern is not this per se, but a, a correlation would be, we've had these criteria about traffic, um, in, uh, properties that happen to have drive-throughs, uh, for ice cream dogs, and the enforcement of said conditions is fairly non-existent. So, it says here, if, basically, if things aren't kept on the up and up, that it can be revoked. It's a little easier to, to deactivate permission for a drive-through on a former bank and ice cream shop than it is a seventy-five hundred square foot multi-million dollar facility. What kind of oversight or, or discussions are anticipated? Because that was a concern that came up at the March meeting, is at certain times and of the day and certain projects, you know, it's, it's fairly school-centric there, but as we know with Kettering and the existing apartment building, there's a lot more traffic, and it's zoned for people that work with the school. So, how can we enforce that, or what's the reality and feasibility? Because I'm a little uncomfortable with, uh, if it doesn't work out, we'll revoke it, this is a little different than a drive-through.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good catch, the word revoke is pretty strong there, and what we have talked to with the drive-through restaurants about is requiring adding staffing, uh, to actually have staff to increase the speed or have traffic control and management out in the public right-of-way, because those are public safety issues. With the length of University Park Boulevard, that does provide some mitigating effect. There was a determination by the city engineer that there was not a traffic impact analysis needed, however, things do happen and things do change, there could be potentially reprogramming of the signal, there could be right-of-way improvements made to help with, uh, stacking and queuing and loading, additional staffing added, so the likelihood of the city actually revoking and preventing the usage of the bus maintenance facility is extremely low. It's more like there would be, uh, requirements that the school staff would provide some mitigation to lessen the impact on public safety at the signal.
And, and this could, so not thinking of the signal at twenty-seven, but, um, the easement was taken north for future development potentially, and, um, in the lower corner, that's a parcel, if I'm not mistaken, that's not owned by the school, so with how they're zoned, if those are developed, what responsibility does the district have for ten years down the road, altering or amending what they have? So, under the words, University Park Boulevard, that, if I'm not mistaken, is not their parcel.
That's correct.
And above it is not theirs, so if in ten years, two complexes come in, the aviary, two, three, and five, what, what's the impact or, uh, relevance to, uh, decision, decision criteria, okay?
My understanding is it's kind of first come, first served, so if the development that's already there now, uh, the, so the new developer of that vacant property would have to take into consideration what is already there, and the city engineer would have to determine if the new development has additional impacts that cannot be mitigated by the development or additional improvements in the right-of-way, so additional signals, turn lanes, those kinds of things, so the responsibility would not fall back on the school, it would be on the new development.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Perry. Um, oh, Ms. Tofelsky, Ms. Reed, I'm not sure who's, who's coming up to speak, so I'll invite
Hi, I'm Shawna Tofelsky, thank you for having me again, uh, tonight, um, Sam did a phenomenal job, so the only thing I can reiterate is that we took your concerns and, uh, brought them back and, um, and implemented the additional trees, uh, for the, um, for the aesthetics, the sound, the noise pollution, et cetera, so, like I said before, we are willing to do whatever is needed to get this project moving and started, so we will be kicked out soon, and we need a place for our buses and maintenance to go, so if you have any questions, I'm here.
Thank you, anyone have any questions?
So, can I ask you a question, and this is, it just happened at, by looking at the topographical map, which has a pretty high, uh, resolution, there's a mounded feature at the center of the site, do you know if that's likely from the construction activities of the high school? It's just, I, you know, it's, it's, it's an anomalously like mound of something.
You talking on the northern side?
Yeah, the northern side, and so I don't know whether there's any origins that you know of from the construction of the high school, which perhaps would, uh, be fair. I mean, that was before your time, I just, we live in a part of the world where you see mounds, uh, you know, so I just, I would love to...
Discussion within five hundred yards of that, um, a report of Native American burial and so, that's a good question.
So. It's our unders, it's our understanding it's just remnant, leftover material from the build, the construction of the school, and we will be grading into that with the construction of this compound.
So, I guess, yeah, just as a, if, 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 if someone who was around in the construction of the school would know, could confirm that, it would alleviate any concerns that there was something historical there, uh...
Thank you. Any other questions?
I, I just want to make sure, and I'm, I'm think this has been discussed, so I'm a little bit behind, but it's, it's number I in decision criteria, and it speaks of development of the site operation, the use will not require substantial public intervention for additional industrial services, and speaks of the approved relocation of a loan easement for a future cross-town, crosstown roadway, which is viewed as a, quote, "good thing"? Uh, I mean, it's a beneficial, it's beneficial, is, is what I'm suggesting, or rather what I'm questioning, and I just want to know if there's any remarks pertinent to this, or whether...
I say, just as it says, I think we should go forward without any comment or observation.
I'm not sure...
Guess the staff analyzed that?
Yeah, I, I think that might be a good question for Mr. Perry or Mr. Boar, last miss read.
So, the, our belief is that the, the easement that is being... So, the, our belief is that the, the easement that is being relocated, that council has approved, maintains the intent of the crosstown roadway from one side of the railroad tracks to the other. And so, this, this project created the need to make sure that it's maintained.
Right, okay. That was, that was what I was seeking, thank you.
All right, I don't see any other questions, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, uh, we will entertain any comments, um, from members of the public related to this matter on the agenda. And, uh, if you'd like to offer your perspective and share with the commission, you have to hear what you have to say.
Hello, thank you, I'm Seth Crowbaker. Thanks, Steve, for the introduction earlier, um, and just taking a quick second to say, um, you know, kind of growing into this role of economic development and, uh, really looking to, to add a voice to these conversations, uh, supporting development. Um, not supporting developers, not supporting any specific project, but supporting opportunity for the city of Oxford. That's really hope, what, you know, I'll be able to, to advocate for, um, kind of move it forward. Uh, I think this is a good project, uh, for the city of Oxford. Certainly, you know, on, on its face, it doesn't, um, on the surface show a lot of economic development opportunity. Uh, but I think indirectly it provides quite a bit. Uh, the relocation of the busing, uh, garage services, all those busing operations away from that Chestnut Fields site, which has to be done in order to move forward on some very significant multimodal projects, um, is, is a real windfall for our community. I think beyond that, uh, Steve brought up the, this idea of kind of a cross, um, across the city, uh, movement, transportation. I do think that, uh, moving to this facility, uh, again, opens up a major east-west corridor along that southern edge of the, uh, the mile square. So, it's gonna really help kind of that crosstown traffic, uh, in an area that may see significantly more traffic as, um, you know, Butler County Regional Transit Depot and Enamtrack and things like that get developed. So, um, certainly from an economic development standpoint, the CIC would support this project as, as something that would help Oxford move forward, so, thank you.
Sir, are there any other comments from members of the public?
I'd like to move to close.
I have a motion to close public hearing.
Second.
Mr. Dana with the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Seeing none, we are out of public session. This discussion, my friends.
So, I guess I would, the, the conditional use is something that is, is generally permit, if it's listed as a conditional use and schools are listed as a conditional use in the zone, um, and I think by schools in the twenty-first century, that includes transportation facilities as integral, just as though we include, um, football fields and parking lots and, um, FFA greenhouses. So, it's, it's a part of a school and, uh, schools are permitted, uh, as a conditional use. So, then the question becomes, does this modification create negative consequences that, uh, either can be mitigated or can't be mitigated? And if they can be mitigated, then it's kind of incumbent on us to approve it. Whether or not we like it or not, it's more just like, and so to me, I think we discuss the negative consequences in terms of the lighting, um, the potential noise, um, things like that. And it seems to me that all the potential concerns that we raised or that would be raised about something like this are addressed by the design features. Um, now, it, it, so it's, it's, uh, and, and I think the, I appreciate there was outreach to the neighbors who would be most likely impacted by buses idling at, at four or five-thirty in the morning, um, the fact that there wasn't really concern. So, I, I, I think it's good, I mean, this is why conditional uses come before planning commissions, because this is an impact. But I think that this is, yeah, I'm in support of this as designed and I really appreciate the additional investment in the screening and the slots. And, um, and that will address a lot of the issues and, and maybe hopefully in ten years, the buses will be electric and they won't make as much noise. So, uh, so that's my piece on that one.
Yeah, I, I normally reserve my comments to the end, but one that I do want to point out, and I do want this, I, I have a comment to something Dr. Perthridge said, and I do want this reflected in the minutes. Uh, I commend the district for reaching out to the property owner, but I want to make sure people understand it was to the property owner and it's a complete rental apartment and for compliance, they, they hypothetically, I have no idea what was done, but they could have posted something on a community bulletin board that nobody knew about. So, I don't want to put too much credence to the fact that there was no feedback, because as renters, they have no stake. And, and if anything, we've learned living in Oxford, a college town, the owner of the property and the people who reside there are worlds apart many a time. So, that was the only thing I wanted to timely interject there.
I think that's an excellent point, but I, I want to simply come forward in supporting what Dr. Perthridge has said. And it's a very simple formula, there's, if it can't, it's our obligation to look at, if it can be mitigated and it's in the public interest, then it should be supported. That was, I think, what you said.
Mr. Keebler.
I'm probably, probably the only one, but.
I'm voting no on this request. While it may be school-related, it's a commercial industrial use and clearly does not meet the city's code for conditional use in a residential zone. If I look at Hamilton, Little Town, Dakota, bus garages aren't co-located with the school. So, this is somewhat unusual, actually, even though it was located by Towne Wonder for years. But it was over there at the edge where the city garage is and the township garage, et cetera. Given the size of the, given the size of the property, I might have been willing to accept that they located the garage in the southeast corner of the property, beyond the cell tower adjacent to land zone off a slight industrial rather than located next to two big properties, zoned residential. And lastly, I gotta say, it's kind of a protest, though. When I was serving on council in exchange for the city giving up its claim to the reverted Chestnut Street school property, we negotiated right-of-way through the area now requested for the bus garage. I disagree strongly that the replacement is anywhere near as good as the other one was. The other one maybe couldn't have gone across the railroad right there, but you had, uh, University Parkway, beautiful sweeping turn that could have turned back toward the railroad or could have turned into the next property, if the city were able to acquire it. Whereas this thing's gonna, okay, it's gonna be a connector to, to a south, southern city connector, but oh, this nice parkway all of a sudden stops. And you gotta have a traffic light to make a right turn to get into this other property. And looking at the maps, it's not as wide as the other negotiated right-of-way was. So, again, it's kind of a protest, can't do anything about it, cause city council already took it away, but I don't think it was a good move. It's turning a beautiful University Parkway into a dead end with only a hard right angle intersection. And I strongly disagree with Sam, who says it's similar, it ain't anywhere close to what that other right-of-way was. This term of a flowing connector, so, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Keebler.
I don't have much to say, um, I'm just glad that it could come back to planning so quickly, so that, um, this could, uh, move forward. Cause I'm really supportive of it, I just agreed that it wasn't a minor amendment last time.
Some more thoughts with that?
So, we didn't dig into it, I'm not looking for an answer, but, uh, Mr. Crowbaker had mentioned that B C R T A multimodal, multimodal and Amtrak. And just being, uh, I think it's fair to say intimately familiar with those.
Yeah.
I, I see this as contrary to the environmental direction the, you know, or the city is going with elimination and consolidation. Uh, the R T A is going to have a larger footprint there, we're gonna have platforms and other things, and now we're gonna have two of them, uh, with gas, diesel, other sort of things. And we're decades away from plugging everything in. That being said, I still, and I do appreciate, I genuinely appreciate the district's mitigation efforts, but, um, I, I actually would have to agree to an extent with Mr. Keebler in that if my reading of the map is correct, the closest dwelling unit to that, uh, aerial fuel tank is about two hundred feet. And maybe I've watched too many movies, but that scares me. Uh, it, that's the closest I've seen. It's one thing, the sequencing is very important. When a residential dwelling is there and then we put the problem next to it is different than if the people on the north build a neighborhood and people choose to buy that. Um, I, I think the sequencing is critical for me. The, the folks in those apartments, and if you know about the demographics of some of those folks, I, I just don't know if that aligns completely with the ecological, the economic or other factors the, the city's trying to go for. So, um, kind of on the fence here, but I just, I wanted to make sure that was reflected in the minutes.
I do agree with one thing you said, when, when the school board, previous school board decided to sell Towne Wonder, they definitely said they would be part of the intermodal and co-locate the buses and everything down there. And now, the school board's decided differently, so I do want to point that out, you're right.
Well, and it's difficult with these things because there's the scope of what our conversation is, and then there's all the other history. And obviously, there's a lot of history around this stuff. Um, yeah, I, 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 I wish that there were the efficiencies of combined facility, but those are not decisions. Yeah, that was the school board's decision. One thing that I would say, since we're just talking about it, I think that this is just a request, and maybe you have one or maybe you don't, is that I can, I can imagine there will be continued development of this hundred-and-fifty acre parcel as far as school. And so, to the degree that you develop a master plan for what will go where will help us, for example, in determining what's the best alignment to reserve in the future so that it's not part of a building site. So, I, I think that it's likely over the future that, that, that high schools, we see it's not the only thing you're gonna have out there. So, the degree you have a master plan that, that can be coordinated with what the city's thoroughfare plan is, let's keep those conversations going, because it'd be better to have the big picture and then fill in the pieces, then fill in a piece and then regret where we put the piece.
But course change and they'll do just the opposite, David, just like your council did versus what my council did.
You also said to the extent that we have a master plan, I mean, I caught that phrase as being rather significant. We don't really have one, do we?
Well, I'm talking about a, a master site plan for the school.
Oh, okay.
But should there be consolidation of facilities here or something, then it would, you know, I think it's just gonna be important because we have cell towers and we have, so maintaining, for example, that north-south right-of-way and where that will go relatively to the school would be, I think it'd be important to talk about. But, but again, things that are beyond the scope of the conversation to me.
But I think those are good points. In the near decade I've lived in town, nothing's been built on, in that general ballpark. And now, we have a new gas station, we have a new health facility, and we have this being proposed. So, I, I think that's a pretty wise, uh, observation.
Do we have any information on whether the residents of the aviary were informed at all or how?
I, I don't believe so.
Well, there was standard notification of the sign, right? You know, so that's, the notification that any neighbor would get a plastic sign that says that it can be a public hearing.
But I think it's fair to say it would be contrary to any direction they would logically travel unless they had something to do with the high school.
We, we put one on twenty-seven in University Park Boulevard as well.
Yeah.
Okay. So, we did two.
I appreciate that.
All right, any other discussion? Seeing none?
So, staff has some conditions, so if we make the motion with the conditions, is that, um, okay?
Yeah, so I was, I was gonna say, um, if, uh, if it's okay with everybody, we will accept the motion in a second. Uh, and the proposal, whoever makes the motion, uh, controls the conversation as to what conditions are or are not included. And then, uh, through acclamation, unless there's objection, I will consider the decision standards, uh, decision criteria standards as agreed upon unless, again, there's dissent or disagreement.
Could you just, just a little bit louder, the last part?
Sorry, I was facing that way.
It's all right.
Uh, we'll entertain a motion, uh, in a second, and, and whoever makes the motion is free to accept, alter, change any of the staff conditions or do what whatsoever they want. Um, and then outside of objection, I will assume that the decision criteria are agreed on as, as being met.
Well, can I propose a proposal?
You can propose a proposal.
Oh, that's what I'm doing.
Yes. Go ahead.
Well, I'm, I'm following very much the staff recommendations on page ten and saying that those should be incorporated into the proposal.
So, you're making a motion?
Yes, I am making a motion.
Awesome, I second it.
All right, thank you for.
It's a motion to approve with the staff recommendations.
Yeah, yes, so, uh, we have a motion to approve with the staff recommendations as described number one through four on page ten. And.
And it's a friendly amendment that we accept as the administrative findings, the staff report, is that how we want to kind of, the, the decision standards? Cause they haven't analyzed the decision standards, right?
That's also on page ten to review of the relevant decision standards right before the conditions, so.
Okay, great. It's vital that they be included into the proposal.
Yep, so we have a motion and a second? Isn't that correct? Mr. Perry, call roll please, okay?
Dr. Perthridge?
Yes.
Mr. Breckin?
Yes.
Mr. Dana?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Keebler?
No.
Mr. Y?
All right, so the motion passes. Uh, next business item is P C twenty-twenty-two dash O two, conditional use for a new hotel. Uh, the applicant is High Point Lodging courtesy of Ms. Reed at Bear Becker. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn to public hearing?
So moved.
Dr. Perthridge and Mr. Dana, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Mr. Moore, you have the floor.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Second case of the evening, so this is at fifty-four seventy College Corner Pike. And this is a conditional use request for a new Holiday Inn Express Hotel. This is P C dash twenty-twenty-two dash zero-two. The applicant for this request is High Point Lodging, under the care of Sam Chowterey. And the property owners are Marcia Hawley and Lindsay Zink. The current use of the property, uh, there really is none, it is vacant, undeveloped. And the property in question, we're talking about three-point-four-seven-five acres of land that is currently zoned G B, general business. So, within the G B, general business district in our code, it is prescribed that hotels, motels are conditional use. So, they're allowed in the district so long as you can, um, can obtain conditional use approval. So, the proposal, a, a little bit more detailed on that, is an eighty-three room hotel. Uh, and again, that's a Holiday Inn Express is the brand that's desired. Here's a look at the site location, so this is directly north of the Ambassador's Point Church, or A P Church for short. So, it's outlined here in black. And this is across U S twenty-seven College Corner Pike from the Wildberry Incense Factory. If you were to go further north along twenty-seven, you would eventually run into the entrance to Walmart and Schneider Electric, which is up here. That's the intersection that's signaled. And this is also in pretty close proximity to the Family Resource Center and the Tops Food Pantry, which is down here off of Ray's Way, which intersects with twenty-seven at this location right here. Um, one thing I will note as well, so this particular property, so the three-point-four acres that is the subject of this conditional use hearing, originally connected to the land that is located to the north and would be far above the extent of this map here. That original parcel was a little over twenty-three acres in size. That was approved for a split last year, um, and that's documented, I believe, in your staff report as to exactly when that was. Um, but this is something that did come through our office as far as authorizing this split. Uh, I believe A P Church now owns the remainder portion, which is around, uh, twenty acres or so. So, just a little bit of history and context there. And here is a look at the zoning classifications in the area, so it's kind of a mixture. So, the church property, as well as some apartment complexes to the south, those are zoned residentially, are three. Uh, the parcels that you see immediately to the north of the church, the reason they're not in color is because they're in the township. Uh, I don't think I rec- Uh I don't think I recall exactly what the zoning classification was, but it is a fairly low-density district if I remember correctly. I think it's possibly either an A-one or an R-one. If you go immediately over twenty-seven toward the west, so the Wildberry Incense Factory, that is owned Light Industrial, LI, so that's shown in purple. Um but otherwise, if you're looking to the north or immediately to the west, all of the land that's adjacent is also within the same zoning classification within General Business or GB. Okay, so just to kind of acquaint you with the site here, I have a series of photos. So this is US twenty-seven that's looking north from Ray's Way, so you can see the crosswalk here. Um so the site would be on the other side where you see this fencing here. So this is looking at more or less the southeastern corner, the far corner of the site, generally right over here. And then this is looking the opposite direction, so previously we were standing right over here, looking sort of this direction, now we're looking the opposite direction. So this is US twenty-seven looking south and this is the intersection with Ray's. You see that there's the crosswalk there with the signs that are noted. And this is a look, there is an existing curb cut into this site. So the proposal seeks to utilize this existing apron. There may be some improvements to the apron itself just to bring it up to city specifications, but this will more or less become the new single entrance point into the hotel development. See the for sale sign there as well. And then, so this is hopping across twenty-seven, so this is that same curb cut. There is an existing multi-use path that runs along twenty-seven. Uh I'm not exactly sure whether this was part of the same improvement project that improved twenty-seven, there's a chance that it could have been, um that would have widened twenty-seven, add added the turn lane, put in the curbs. Um so this is very much an existing amenity that will be tapped into as a result of this development. Um you can see there's some street trees that are already planted along the trail between the multi-use path and the curb. Then this is looking toward the north, so you can see a look at some existing vegetation that's there along more or less the boundary there, uh more or less delineating where some of the steeper slopes of the site are located. And so uh I think there's been a very deliberate effort with this particular plan to try to concentrate the parking and all the developed surfaces on the flattest portion of the site and leave as much of that land as undisturbed as possible. And here is a look, so there is a drainage swale that's existing. I believe it's about fifty feet or so of width measuring from the back of the multi-use path to what I'll call the ridge or the edge of the swale. Um so that swale is actually within the public right-of-way. So that swale is more or less not going to be disturbed um as a result of this project, so uh the edge of the parking would probably be somewhere along in this vicinity here. And then the walkway uh that would be leading up to the front entrance of the hotel would be more or less right at the edge of that swale, there may need to be some railing um just to make sure that that's a safe passageway um to in order to navigate from the multi-use path up to the front entrance of the hotel. So here's a bird's eye view, so this gives you a better picture for that finer edge to the existing woods. There is a stream that runs back here as well. Uh I believe that was shown on the previous slides in better detail. Uh but that stream hopefully will not be too greatly impacted by the development. There will be a detention basin that is constructed more or less in this location here that would probably come in closest contact to that stream. And the drainage well that I showed you before, so there's a little thicket of woods, uh if if you even wanna call them woods, uh that is there at the southeastern edge or corner of the site, so that's right here. And then this is looking at from more of a top-down view. So just to walk you through where this process has been, so this plan was never formally submitted, but it was brought to staff. This was the original site plan that the applicant brought to us. So their original proposal was for a hotel building that actually contained eighty-nine rooms as opposed to eighty-three. And the orientation of this building, as you can see, was quite different from what ended up being submitted. So it was oriented most prominently for the motorists that would be traveling southbound, so coming from the north side of Oxford, less so oriented toward those travelers coming from the south. Also, pretty much the entire parking lot was oriented or positioned to be in front of the building and that was also problematic from a code perspective, which only allows up to seventy percent of the required parking to be in front of the building. There were also some emergency access issues that our fire chief had communicated to us as far as getting access to all four corners of the building. Uh with this design, this didn't allow for that, there wasn't any vehicular access of any kind to offer some protection to these sides of the building. So the applicant kindly took our comments and I think we've ended up with a much better plan that helps to fulfill the most important code standards. So keeping the vast majority of the parking to the side and to the rear. Um the dumpster enclosure would be located kind of here in this uh corner area. Here is the uh multi-use path and here is that connector piece that runs up to the entrance. So this would be sort of the front canopy entrance to the hotel, kind of like a drop-off area. And uh you might have noticed the the right-of-way kind of varies. I uh like to sort of compare it to the the edges of mountains almost, like the ridge of mountains, uh kind of zigzags back and forth. So um the applicant has tried to keep as much of the development features past that right-of-way line as they can um because more or less the right-of-way that is more or less seen by our service department, so they uh would have more of a direct role in any changes that were to occur in that area. So the changes are limited to more or less the the entrance, the vehicular entrance, which is here using that existing apron and then the connector over to the entrance, the front uh door entrance to the hotel. And then this shape right up here, this is the detention basin that's proposed, so if I move to the next slide, so this puts a transparency on the plan, so you can see there will need to be some clear cunning probably that will be involved, some regrading of that land in order to accommodate that stormwater piece within that particular area. But otherwise, as you can see, everything else, the parking, the building itself is pretty well kept clear of this this particular side of the site that is most heavily wooded and has some of the uh most variation in the topography. So this is looking at the site plan at more of a close-up view. And then this is the landscaping version of the plan, so you can see there's variety of trees, so they're showing deciduous trees, evergreens, uh shrubbery as well. And I believe this is actually, this is not the most up-to-date because these trees have since been swapped out for some shrubbery just because, again, because of that drainage swale, it just seemed a little bit better to put some shrubs in there versus some trees. Uh but those three trees have been relocated elsewhere within the plan itself, so we haven't lost any trees as a result of that. Uh but it's a total of sixty-three trees total, fifty-six shrubs. Um so staff was very keen to make sure that we were complying to the best degree possible with the standards of the tree preservation ordinance. Um there is a waiver that's recommended to relieve from the tree survey requirement just because um we feel like the most important objective is being achieved and that we're getting the development concentrated in the area where we want it to be concentrated. And we're also getting a lot of new trees being planted that previously would not be in existence, so. Um here is a look at the building elevations, so just to walk you through some of the details on that, they are proposing a combination of, it'll be mostly a brick material, I'm sorry, let me go back, hit the wrong button there. It would be mostly a brick material, there would be some ephes, which is like an artificial stucco. Here, the front facades, there is some articulation in the building as well, which is meeting another code requirement. There's also some uh stone masonry elements to the architecture. And we are recommending a waiver that the final building permit plans adhere substantially at least to these elevations that have been provided at this stage. Um the glazing of the building is something that is not being met, at least with the strict standard of the code, the minimum is normally sixty percent. Um given the use of the building as a hotel, it's not as feasible to meet that um since you've broken up the building into a lot of individual compartmentalized um hotel rooms. So I believe, the last time I checked, the glazing was around half of that, a little above thirty percent is where I believe it has ended up. Okay, and then this is a look at the side elevation, so the west side, the east side, this gives you probably the best view of the intended canopy, which is a little bit of a tilt. And uh these elevations are showing wall signage. Um however, I don't believe those are the intended sizes, so we have separate sheets that convey the intended wall sign size um for the structure, which I'll get to here in a moment. Okay, and I figured I would also show you just the first floor, the floor plan for the first floor, not go through all four floors, it'll be a total of four. Uh but just to kind of showcase some of the amenities that are planned, so there would be an indoor pool, a fitness facility, two meeting room spaces, a pretty large lobby area, breakfast nook uh over here as well, and then the green down here, of course, delineating the canopy. And um on the first floor, there would be three king-sized bed um hotel rooms and two rooms with double queen. And then on the remaining second, third and fourth floors, they're pretty similar to one another. On each of those floors, you would have eighteen double queen and eight king. So eighty-three, again, eighty-three hotel rooms in total. And um the overall parking has come out to a total of one hundred parking spaces. Um that's where we've ended up in our various iterations of this plan. Um so that is meeting the code minimum, which is one per room, but it is giving a little bit of extra parking space for employees or extra visitors, anybody who's attending for a meeting. Um so there is a little bit of of flexibility built in there. And of those one hundred, there would also be four accessible ADA spaces, so ninety-six conventional or regular spaces for ADA is where we ended up on that. Okay, so walking through the signage proposals, so the proposal from the applicant, they're more or less requesting two waivers to code, one has to deal with the size of the signage, the other has to do with the number of signs. So the code only allows for a maximum of two signs on a site, uh permanent signs for a general business, single-tenant site, which is what this is, single-tenant. And you can have a total of up to two wall signs, or you can have one wall sign and one freestanding sign. What is being proposed is two wall signs plus one freestanding sign, so one extra sign in total. The other request has to do with the maximum height uh of the wall signs, so getting into the size aspect. So this is a representation of the uh proposed size of the wall signs. So one on the east side, one on the front of the building. And those would be a little bit over sixteen and a half feet of height. Um the code maximum height is three feet. So anytime there's a building that the average setback is less than a hundred feet from the right-of-way, the maximum height for a sign is three feet. So that should give you an impression, there's a pretty significant degree of variation between this little red bar here and the overall um sort of height of this sign, so including the the lettering and the logo or medallion that sits above it. Um the monument sign, the freestanding sign that they're proposing, it's in the right location, it would meet the proper setback um per the code, but the issue would be, again, the sign height. So the maximum height for a ground sign or freestanding sign is six feet. So they are proposing it at eight feet, so it would be taller than the typical um man, as you can see here. Okay, so the staff is recommending approval of this conditional use and I'll go through each of the conditions and kind of outline what the rationale is behind each of those. So the first condition is just clarifying that staff does not support any of the signed waivers that have been requested. We did offer the potential that if the applicant wanted to send us alternate plans to show reduced sign sizes that were maybe a little bit larger than what was allowed by code, they did have that option, they chose not to exercise that option at this point. Um so because we don't really have any other alternate plans to react to, we wouldn't recommend entertaining any waivers until such time as such plans were or could be submitted. So what this condition is recommending is that all signage shall comply with the zoning code requirements for GB, so no waivers to sign size or number would be granted by virtue of the approval. Condition number two is just making sure that the buildings are gonna be built more or less as they're presented to you right now with the elevations. Um condition number three is just kind of a helpful reminder there, at the building permit stage for the administrative review, we're checking for lighting compliance, so pole heights and adequate lighting for security, um meeting the glare-type requirements. And those types of details don't typically get submitted as part of conditional use, so that's just there as a reminder when it comes time for the administrative review of the permit. Condition four, so this has a lot to do with the comments that were expressed by the fire chief in terms of um creating potential bottleneck issue at that single access point. Um there was a previous iteration of the plan that was kind of between that most original one that you saw, it had all the parking in front, and the one that you are seeing now that's been formally submitted. Um there was one that did show a total of two curb cuts. Um we, as community development staff, we think it should be one curb cut as opposed to two, just to avoid um excess crossings across that multi-use path and for a variety of reasons. Uh where that second curb cut would go, um across from Ray's Way would likely be the location. There would be probably considerable engineering that would have to be done to make that area work from a stormwater perspective just because where that existing swale is and whatnot. Um but I did wanna throw this in here just as a way to offer some flexibility that when it did come to administrative review, if there was um a way to sort of widen that driveway out to um help alleviate the potential at least for a bottleneck issue that if people ended up parking on that driveway and and um were blocking up the potential for emergency access into the site, um that that could hopefully be better avoided with a little bit wider of a driveway, so. Just indicating that we're not locking ourselves into a twenty-four-foot-wide entrance, which is what is more or less shown on the plan at this point. Condition five is a waiver for the glazing to reduce it from sixty percent to down to about a little over thirty percent, is how I calculated it. Condition six is a waiver to the maximum building height. Um and we did run this by the fire chief as well, he is supportive of this waiver, it's only by a few feet and it's primarily just accounting for a parapet wall for the structure. Um so it is a four-story-tall structure, which is, as you, I'm sure you know, is pretty common in Oxford, especially uptown here, the four-story buildings that we see. Um so not too much of a concern there, but it is needing to be acknowledged as a waiver. Condition seven, I will not read that paragraph, but that goes into the typical details that we talk about with landscaping, the relief from the tree survey requirement, but making sure that that landscaping plan is fulfilled and that any areas that are to remain undisturbed do in fact remain undisturbed uh as a result of the construction. Um condition eight is a waiver for allowing parking spaces in the front yard setback. So the reason for this has to do with the way that the right-of-way line factors into the proposal. I think the spirit of most setback regulations, in particular the front yard setback, is that they're typically measured from the back of the walkway or the sidewalk, or in this case, the multi-use path. And a lot of that distance is already being made up with what is a very wide right-of-way to begin with. Um so I think the spirit of the code is being met with the proposal, even though if you were to measure truly based on how it's written, it's not in compliance, but we do support a waiver to it. Condition number nine is a waiver uh granted to allow some parking um immediately to the east of the entrance to be five feet away as opposed to six feet from that right-of-way line and that's just to um bump out that pedestrian walkway as much as possible and then allow enough room so that the shrubbery that is now planned can be planted along the edge adjacent to the swale. And then condition ten is a waiver acknowledging that drive aisles uh do not necessarily all have to be perpendicular to one another. And where this comes into play is in that southeastern corner, that's a little bit awkward just based on the geometry of the site. And we felt it was essential in this case to help to boost the vehicular parking, just given the isolated nature of the site. There's not a lot of other opportunities for parking nearby. Um so we felt it was necessary, especially in this case, and again, to help prevent that bottleneck issue that the fire chief was concerned about at the entrance, that we have more parking. And we're um gracious that uh, well, we're grateful that the applicant's been gracious enough to provide that parking, but in order to do so, it comes as a a little bit more of a triangular arrangement, if you will, as opposed to a typical parking lot layout. Okay, so that concludes all the conditions and the ration- So that concludes all the conditions and the rationales for those conditions, so with that, that concludes my presentation, I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Moore?
I might have one. So under stamp recommendations, all portions of the mature vegetation area in the northwest corner of the site, which are free and clear planned development features, shall remain undisturbed, so to not have to go through tree survey. When I look at the blueprints, it looks like the retention basin would go into a significant chunk of that, is that likely the case?
That is, that is the case, and I think this slide best demonstrates that. So, and that is certainly a valid discussion point for the commission at this stage, is if you feel like this is fitting too much into the site, then maybe something needs to be changed about it, but staff's assessment of this is, yes, there will be a little bit of a pocket that is lost. We are appreciative that the applicant has reduced the size of the hotel too, because originally it was eighty-nine rooms, now we're down to eighty-three, but there are those stormwater functions that are pretty essential that have to be met. The city engineer did have some comments of that effect, that there would need to be some kind of a design solution that would be reached at the time when these plans are done, and more of an engineering level detail. So actually, I think that would be a great question for the applicant, is if they have an idea on exactly what that solution might be and what the level of impact might be to those woods in that area.
I have a question, not about the woods, but the same part of the footprint. As I've looked at the various drawings and maps, I'm having a hard time figuring out where that basin aligns with the street. Because we have, in the ones where we have a basin, I see tree line impact and tree line, but then in other ones, without the building footprint, I see the creek or the bollard, so that's where I'm having a little trouble figuring out how these overlay and overlap.
I think the only slide that I have, unfortunately, would be this one, and I actually don't know the data source on that, I doubt that that is from USGS, but this could be a stream that has meandered over time too, so a lot of this might have to involve some ground truthing to find out exactly where that stream is, and hopefully there would be some efforts here in terms of, certainly probably an NPDES permit, in terms of, you know, mitigation, stormwater quantity, quality, all of that, so hopefully the stream's location would be respected as a part of that. But if I had to try to delineate the location of that stream as best I could on top of the site plan view of the proposal, let's go back to here, probably somewhere in this general vicinity, right here.
So somewhat adjacent to the proposed tree line edge or the new tree line edge?
I believe so, yes.
Is that codified, or would that need to be a condition that it meets all geological? And, I mean, I know with environmental protection, that's in there, but I was a little confused, or I guess I have questions about some of the wording, you would hope that they were some...
My perspective on it is, if you feel like that's concerning or problematic from a planning standpoint, and you feel like this layout isn't comfortable enough to that regard, then what should probably be entertained is some kind of a design change. I don't think a condition necessarily would work to much benefit, because those processes and procedures, if we're talking about NPDES, EPA, water quality, all of that, that is more or less operating outside of the city umbrella, there may be some strings attached with respect to engineering review, service department, et cetera, but I'm not exacting what those might be, if there are any, but, and that might be something the applicant could elaborate on as well.
Well, and I guess another way to ask it is if, and again, not knowing where the water goes, I mean, I have a dry creek that gets sporadically full. But according to that first chart, it impacts six, seven properties, and I know it's adjacent to the Walmart retention, so that's why I want to make sure, because one of the things we discuss quite a bit is the impact to adjacent properties. So I just want to make sure that we're, if it's codified, and it's something that is an engineering requirement or mitigation, and if you think of like South Point and some of those, Lake Forest, we had a lot of detail and information on the ecological and topographical impact that I didn't see, and if I missed it, in this lovely Remo paper, I'm happy if somebody could point it out, but I just want to make sure we're consistent in that respect as well.
Can I just add a quick technical question? Does our code prohibit the construction of a stormwater basin within the front yard setback, or would that need to be, in terms of design flexibility, is there a front yard setback that's pushing the stormwater basin in any particular direction or no? I know parking can, there are prohibitions there.
I don't believe we have a standard to that effect as it relates to stormwater features.
Okay, thank you.
Primarily like structures and things like that, parking.
All right, great, okay. Thank you, sir. Any other questions for Mr. Moore? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Right. Ms. Reed? I was looking for you, you were behind Mr. Potter, and I couldn't see you.
Here, please. Thank you. Good evening, Etta Reed with Bear Becker's, One Ten South College Avenue, Oxford, Ohio. I'm here on behalf of High Point Lodging. Representatives and the owner of High Point Lodging are also here with me today, so if you have any specific questions for them, I know they'll be more than happy to answer them for you. A little bit about High Point Lodging, they do have forty years of experience in the hotel industry, and they are a family-owned business, they actually build and operate all their own hotels, and they currently have twelve hotels. The proposed application before you tonight is for a Holiday Inn Express and Suites. It will have eighty-three guest rooms, as well as a fifty-person meeting room and a boardroom that can accommodate about twelve to fifteen people, a fitness center, an indoor pool, and a business center. I know Zach did a good job kind of showing you the floor plan, so I'm not going to bore you to death with that, but we do have some nice photos and renderings of some of the facilities, so you can see the quality and the color that you can expect with this development. The lobby, as you can see, is very colorful, very high-end. Some of the guest rooms, hallways, kind of like an office center. A fitness center for the guests, as well as there's just a kind of a photo of the entry. Pool, there's the conference room, as well as a boardroom, against some more guest rooms, and then this is just a photo of the sign. One thing about Holiday Inn Express on a Suites is that they do have a good following and a loyal customers. A lot of their customers are repeat guests, and they actually, when they come to town, that's the hotel of their choice, versus like a Marriott or a Hilton. I want to just touch on some of the economic impact that this hotel will bring to both Butler County and, more importantly, the city of Oxford. They're looking to add thirty-one jobs, as you can see, it's broken down anywhere from the food and beverage front desk to the management. They'll have six full-time employees with an average salary of forty-five thousand dollars a year, as well as twenty-five part-time employees with an average hourly rate of twelve dollars. They're projected to have twenty-five thousand stays per year, in year one, that it's based at about two-point-nine million dollars. As you can see, there's quite a nice tax collection benefit to both the county and the city, just under a hundred and ninety thousand for the county sales tax, as well as a hundred and ninety thousand for the city's lodging tax, and of course, we always have the property tax. In the surrounding areas, as you're aware, there's not a whole lot of hotels once you leave Oxford. You're going to Hamilton, they have one, you know, with Spooky note coming along, and just Miami, and everything they have, there is a need for hotel rooms. Right now, in the Oxford area, there's only three-hundred-and-twenty-two, so you add our eighty-three, we're, you know, right around the four-hundred mark. You know, the current hotels also do not offer suites, so they will have, the Holiday Inn Express will have thirty suites for extended stay guests, so maybe you have a visiting professor or a family that wants to kind of stay a little longer than a weekend to stay with a family member, a student who's sick. You know, and as we mentioned, there's a large amount of loyal customers who receive points, similar to, as, you know, everybody has the loyalty programs now, so they will receive points for each stay, and so since there is not a Holiday Inn Express in town currently, they have to go all the way to Harrison or Fairfield, thus taking those dollars, those dining dollars, those shopping dollars with them, and we don't have that here, and so that would be another great reason, you know, for the Holiday Inn Express. This will be over a ten-million-dollar project, and it'll bring construction workers, it'll take us two years to construct, so again, there's two years of lunches, there's two years that those construction workers will need a place to stay at other hotels within the community, so it's bringing, you know, more people, more faces to the Oxford community. But enough about the economics, I want to dig in a little more to the site plan, Zach did a great job explaining it, again, I'm not going to dig too deep. As we mentioned, the existing vegetation, kind of in the northwest corner, is going to remain the detention basin. We are looking to do a surface basin, we do need to determine the exact location of the stream, obviously, if we deter, if we get into the stream, we would have to get permits from the Army Corps, Ohio EPA, we're fully aware of that. What our intention is to do is go down near the, near the stream, but not into the stream, we'd have to build a dike, fortify the backside of that dike so it doesn't erode away, and build that basin there. If that, you know, we have backup options, if for some reason that doesn't work out and the permits don't come through, we could always do an underground detention basin, that's not what we would prefer, we would prefer the surface basin, but there's options, we're not left high and dry, per se. We have exceeded the parking requirements, as Zach had indicated, but that's only because we are asking for some waivers, so I would appreciate that granting here in the future, here coming up. We do have the multi-use path across the front, shown in yellow, and it is extending north into the site, and then we do have a continued little walk cutting through under the canopy to get you through to the front door, which will be very nice, because we do have fifteen bicycle spaces, so even if I'm out of town, I can come in, have my bike on the back, and, you know, hop off, get on the trail, and I'm into town easily, or on the oats trail around town. With the conditional use, as you're aware, there are specifics concerns in your code that have to be addressed, and so the three specific concerns for a motel hotel are the proximity to residential, so while the property to the east, both in the township and in the city, is zoned residential, it's not developed as such. The property in the township is vacant, and the property, obviously, immediately next to us, Allen Twenty-Seven, is a church, so while we are adjacent to residential, it's not really functioning and developed as residential. Screening from residential is the next concern, we are providing a landscape buffer along the whole west, I'm sorry, the whole east side of the property, which is the property that is zoned residential, and then lastly, the appropriate street access. We have wonderful access on US Twenty-Seven, we're going to use the existing drive apron, and if necessary, we will definitely bring it up to code. Again, here's our landscape plan, it's very robust, we provide buffering for the parking along both Twenty-Seven and then on the east side, and then just nice trees along the back, and then we are also providing some landscaping there along Twenty-Seven, I think there was some concern about it being too close to Twenty-Seven, maybe in the front yard, we are going to provide, as you can see, some landscape buffering there to kind of, just kind of blend it all in. There are several waiver requests that Zach had mentioned, and I just want to hit on, of course, the tree survey waiver, we are preserving the existing trees in the northwest portion, the area that's crosshatched are the exempt areas, so as you're aware, in your code, any area and just outside the parking areas and the buildings are exempt, as well as the detention basins. The next waiver has to deal with the building, there's actually two waivers we're requesting, which is the glazing, which, as staff has indicated, is very difficult with the hotel to meet the sixty percent, and then the second one is the building height. Where I have that yellow, that is where the forty-five feet is, so you can see the majority of the building is right, you know, the majority of the building is at forty-five feet, eleven and a half inches, but we have some architectural elements, and we have extended the parapet walls in some locations, and that's really what brings us up to the forty-eight feet, nine and a half inches. Parking, there are several waivers we're asking for, that the parking spaces highlighted in red are located in the front yard setback, the red dash line is the front yard setback. The little bubbled area in yellow is where we are encroaching into the six foot, it's only in that one little corner, and that again, is so that we could put those thirteen spaces there, and then the purple diagonal line is where we are, our drive aisles are not perpendicular. And the last series of waivers that we're requesting has to deal with signage. The first one is the freestanding sign, as code does indicate that we are required to have a maximum six-foot-high sign, we are at eight-foot height, but one thing I would like to note is that while we have exceeded the height by two feet, we have left, if you want to say, a lot of square footage on the table, we are allowed to have a forty-eight foot, square foot sign per side, and we're only at twenty-five, just over twenty-five feet per side, so we could make the sign larger, but we can take it two feet shorter, but we can make it a lot larger, so we've decided to go with about two feet taller and make the actual sign face a little smaller. And then the wall sign, as staff has indicated and code has required, the maximum height of a building sign is three feet tall, which, as you can see, doesn't even, it's only half of our H for the Holiday Inn Express. Our buildings are forty-eight, forty-nine feet tall, those signs are approximately twenty-nine feet above the ground, so when you put a three-foot by, you know, a three-foot sign, twenty-nine feet off the ground, you're not going to see it, and so we're asking for some flexibility there to allow us to put a sign that can actually be read from a distance, because our building is also located, you know, and it's not right on Twenty-Seven either, it's pushed back, so we would ask for some flexibility with the size of the wall sign, as well as we are asking for code, we're asking for three signs total, code allows two, we are asking for a freestanding sign as well as two building signs. We have one, a wall sign on the front, and a wall sign on the east side, and so that would be, that's kind of our whole signage request for waivers. We have read all of staff's conditions, we have no problem with them all, except number one, which is the sign waivers, we would ask that you grant us a waiver on the signage. Other than that, we would just appreciate your recommendation of approval to council, and as I mentioned, High Point Lodging is here, as well as myself, to answer any questions you may have.
All right, thank you, Ms. Reed. Any questions for Ms. Reed, or the other applicant owner? Thank you. All right.
He volunteered.
All right, at this point, I'll entertain... At this point, I'll entertain comments from the public pertaining to this proposal. It seems a popular request is for our fire chief, so... Thank you, sir, I love that Mr. Keebler volunteered.
Dick knows me well. My name's John Deathrich, and I serve as the fire chief here in Oxford. You know, I think everybody will agree that it's a great thing to have some more hotel rooms here in town, and also have some tax-paying jobs here, that's definitely something that makes me happy. My job in this process is to make sure that we can keep that place open, and providing hotel rooms and taxes through the jobs. To do that, I think to efficiently do that, we need a second entrance into the place. The way this drawing is set up currently, there is one entrance, which, someone lays a supply line of hose down that one entrance, we're done. So if the first truck into that facility lays a hose to get water, there's nothing else going in there, there's no ladder truck, there's no second engine, no second water supply, it's over. And I'm assuming, you know, obviously, at this stage, we don't have any building drawings or anything like that submitted yet, but I'm assuming this is going to be a stick-built structure, be a wooden structure, so not only is there the fear of a fire in this building, once it's built, there's also a fear of a fire in this building while it's under construction, which will take a lot of water to try to put out. Obviously, the building will be sprinkled, but there are still outstanding issues besides the occupied portions of the building, when you have a wood structure like that, behind the walls, a plumber soldering a joint in the wall, and the place is off to the races. Like I said, I just want to make sure... Like I said, I just want to make sure that, uh, we can provide the service that we need to, to keep this place here for many years. And I'd entertain any questions you might have.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak on this matter? Mr. Groperbanger.
Thank you again, hello again, uh, just speaking to some of the economic, uh, numbers that were shared previously by Ms. Reed. Um, just wanted to speak to those, one, uh, in working with our partners in Miami University as well as the Visitors Bureau in Joy, Oxford. They have indicated a significant, uh, shortage of, uh, hotel rooms, not only in the city of Oxford, but kind of broadly in Butler County, as a direct impact from Spooky Note. Uh, so often hotels in Hamilton and, uh, Westchester really served as kind of an overflow or spillover for Miami's biggest, uh, weekends. Uh, and those are really starting to see bookings all the way into twenty twenty-four in anticipation of events at Spooky Note. Not to mention, uh, the opportunity for, uh, increased stays here within town for our own events. Miami's events, uh, large scale youth sporting events through our Parks and Rec Department and so on. So I do think the addition of a hotel, uh, certainly is a, is a benefit to us. Uh, some of the, the employment numbers that were shared, just looking at those a little bit more deeply. Um, it's thirty-one positions, the full-time equivalent is probably a little closer to eighteen to twenty, given the number of part-time positions that are there. And then on some of the, um, the numbers shared for hourly wages and salaries, the market will determine some of those. So I, you know, I think that there could be, um, some other things to be seen there. Specifically then looking and thinking about, uh, the, this particular project, I think there is some creeds to be lent into the idea of a Holiday Inn, uh, brand and the strength of that brand. As a value add to the city of Oxford, um, and then the, the design, the number of rooms available in this hotel is the largest, uh, number of, of, uh, rooms at any property in and around Oxford. The only thing that, uh, exceeds this is Houston Woods and you have to count the cabins to get to that. But even, uh, beyond that, the number of double queens is a, is something that's particularly of interest to Miami's Athletics Department. The number of teams, uh, visiting teams that come in, they want to put two, a pair of athletes in a room. So I do think there, there are some, uh, features specific to this project, um, that, uh, we would support from an economic development standpoint, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments from the public? All right, seeing none, I will accept a motion to adjourn from public hearing.
So.
Mr. Dana with the motion.
Second.
Mr. Keebler with the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, we are in discussion mode, my friends.
There's one comment that arises from looking at page forty-four. Toward the bottom, the last preliminary submission contained two entrance access to the parking lot to allow for emergency vehicle ingress. Further down in that paragraph, it speaks about parking and it speaks about more parking, helping to solve the problem of a potential bottleneck, at least that's what I read. Somebody correct me if I'm wrong. Now.
My question, or my concern is additional parking spaces, which helps, it says here, to alleviate the potential for a pileup issue at the single curb cut entrance point on College Corner Pike. Does the addition of more parking spaces solve the problem?
The way it's stated is, we're going to help solve it because we're going to quote unquote, "help solve it" by more additional parking, that's the way it's written. And let, let Mr. Keebler respond.
Well, I think the impression I get from the fire chief is it helps, but it's not good enough, that's my answer to the question.
Okay, I think that, I think that's what he's saying.
Yep.
And, uh, Mr. Groperbanger just said that I had to laugh about, where are you going to park the bus? There's, there's not enough parking in there to even think about putting a bus if that place is full. So, uh, Miami could be happy about it, I guess he'd pop up in a Walmart lot and walk down or something, but, you know, that doesn't help.
A couple of comments for me, um, I think that the second entrance is important. And there's no reason why it can't go right out the, uh, east end of that or south end, whatever you want to call it, to a curb cut right there. It's, it seems to me that it's a natural, it shouldn't be an problem, whatever. Yeah, they need to cover a little more of the drainage ditch or build a culvert there, but I don't see why it can't, why it can't happen. As far as the signage is concerned, it'll remind us that we just turned down, uh, an oversized monit-, uh, monument sign on the south end of town. Okay, so I think we'd be, have to be careful why we can allow this, okay? Secondly, I don't think there's anything wrong with the two wall signs. And I think the easiest way to solve it as far as sizing whatever, is to say the two wall signs could be the same size as they have the Hampton Inn. Because we approved two wall signs there. And they're not three foot square. And that should be something that they can make work. So you have to be code on the monument sign, you can do the two wall signs, but they shouldn't be any larger than what was approved on the last hotel that we approved in town.
And if it is, if people have seen it or not seen it.
Yeah, but, you know, they're not seeing it anyway. You didn't like, oh, Jimmy, there's a Holiday Inn, so we'll stop. You know? It doesn't matter that much, but I think we could be consistent here. If I say we approved one at, at the last hotel that was built here and we should probably approve something of the same size, similar square footage. I don't think it's anywhere near as tall as what they're asking for. What I'd like to see, instead of saying the signs will comply, let's go ahead and get this over with. Monument sign needs to comply, the other two, we can have two wall signs, but they should be the same as what was allowed on the Hampton Inn and it needs a second. It's a good project.
So, yes, I want to thank, I, I can see that this has evolved in conversations between the applicant and staff. And so it's always nice when it gets to me and I feel like all the questions have been answered, the, the product is better for having thought through some of the design issues. Yeah, big picture stuff, I mean, Oxford needs a hotel, the more hotels we have, the less pressure we have to convert houses into Airbnbs, which is a huge affordability problem that we have. This is a well-designed project that's permitted in the zone and again, this is a conditional use, so it's about mitigating some of the potential negative impacts. Which I feel like have been mitigated through good design, the screening and the robust landscaping schedule and all that stuff. So I, I'm in total support of it, uh, the, the main questions are from me, that I totally get the desire for the second entrance. On that very occasional and you hope never need that you would need all the fire trucks there and one of the entrances is blocked with a hose. But every curb cut you have is a, is a conflict point that's there every day, all day, for the hundred percent of the time. And so I think that for, for, we have to be careful to not add entrances, um, on the, you know, if, if you can maintain the safety without adding the entrance, I think it would be better. I do think that a twenty-four foot entrance is basically two vehicular travel links and so the odds of it being blocked are really, really, really low.
Until they start working.
Until it's, well, and I think that that's something that could be managed for sure. Here's a question that I have, is that, um, I really am hesitant, I do not support a second entrance. But if one were really, really worried about it, Miami, for example, has satisfied the fire marshal in some of its dorms by having a multi-use path that's surrounded by reinforced something. So you could pull a fire truck into a quad on that once in a million chance that you needed to do that. If one really, really needed to do that, could the multi-use path not provide that, like, once in a million, you could get something up in there, um, as a, as a fallback position? Um, I'm not a fire marshal, I just know that on campus they've solved it in part that, so anyway, I'm in support of the project, I think all the code conditions have been met. I, I, I think that the question of the signs, I'm with Mr. Moore, I'd like to see what the proposal is before I vote on it. I like where you're going with that, uh, and, and maybe if that's what's communicated to the applicant, then, then they can, they can show us something that the council could then, staff could evaluate. So anyway, that's, that's mine. I really do wish, this is my last thing I'm going to say, I, I, I feel like we trade off environmental values because we're trying to handle stormwater and we push the stormwater basins into the forests. And I feel like there's got to be a better way than the way we're doing it, I'm not sure what it is. Um, I wish we could handle the stormwater in not such a space extensive way that then would require those trade-offs. And so I would love to see that there was some design solution that, that didn't require that, um, but I think at the level of conditional use, I'm not going to engineer that to anybody.
Can any of these designs, do you have any hypothetical ideas as what the designs might be that you see?
Well, I, you know, I just, um, again, I'm not an engineer, I'm not seeing the, the, the geography of the site.
Yeah, but you know the event.
Well, I, you know, I think that the, the, the more you could reduce the impervious surface, the less water di- discharge you'd have to accommodate. So if there were low-impact design solutions that could help reduce the stormwater, then maybe wouldn't need to be sized quite so large. That's really the only thing and as, whether some other possible contour of it, but again, I can't engineer that here. I, I would like to see the impact on the forest minimized.
Yeah, I was going to say that, uh, I concur that this is something that's needed in town in general, people come in all the time and didn't have enough places to stay. But also the bigger impact on Airbnbs, right, you relieve some of that pressure, um, and so there's less demand and so hopefully it doesn't, it helps relieve some of the housing, uh, reduction and increase in costs, uh, because of lack of it. Um, but I defer to our experts, our fire chief, when it comes to safety, um, I think I've been pretty consistent on that and I, I'd like to stick with that. If there are all alternatives, like you mentioned, that our chief is okay with, that, that would work for me, but that's something that's important.
I believe the water main out on College Corner Pike is on the other side of the road. Which means to feed that property, they've got to feed it with two water lines, the house line and the fire line, correct? So how about you increase the size of the fire line and make sure there's a hydrant right up there at the corner coming into the building?
Would it be similar to the ones uptown where it's the fire access built into the building, like?
Well, there has to be that, but right now, he's got to lay a line across College Corner Pike.
Oh, I see.
Okay, the other side of the road, the dumb thing the city did when they went out there, they should have had every other hydrant on the other side of the road, but they didn't do it. Okay? So if you have a fire on that side of the road, College Corner Pike, the road shut down. So if you haven't had all your trucks or everybody coming in by the line that you do that, you've got no access. Because you can't drive over five inch fire hose, okay? So I think part of the condition here would be to, that the fire line be of this, that they have put in anyway, be a sufficient size, that there can be a hydrant up at the north west corner of the building.
Yeah?
So. Microphone, microphone.
Thank you, sir. That would still kind of put all of our eggs in one basket, we'd be relying on a private fire hydrant that we don't really control the maintenance of. And during the winter, that thing's frozen, I'm in the same boat that I am now.
But now you're double-doubling, John.
I gotta have water.
While you're up here, uh, do you want to?
That would be a major improvement to not have to lay five inch hose across College Corner Pike.
Sure. Um, while you're up here, would you mind answering, um, uh, Dr. Prithers comments about a multi-use path maybe providing access if we put barriers inside?
So. That decision to use that stuff at the university is probably one of the things that I've been involved in here that I regret the most. It is maintenance-intensive, you never know when it's been dug into, you never know what they put back when it's done. There's several spots where we have gone off the road and onto that stuff and it ruts it up. Apparently it works at Disneyland, but we're not at Disneyland, so I'm, I'm not a fan. So, but just thinking about the, I, I mean, I don't know what, you could put the odds of a fire occurring at a site are, are small, they're super important, but they're small. And then the odds that you would block, there would be a fire and the main entrance would be blocked, reduces your odds even further. So my, my thing is, is it worth building a second entrance with the cost and the negatives that, that would accrue every single day for that very small chance? Or, for example, could a, a multi-use path be made to work for that, that one really, really, really rare circumstance that you have a fire and the main entrance is blocked? So you could at least, I mean, maybe it's a bollard and you could get up in there in that zero, zero, point zero zero one percent chance that that happens. You know, on the other side of the coin, there's thirty-two curb cuts between that property and Church Street. I mean, what are the chances that's the one where there's going to be a problem? I mean, we could sit and what if it all, all day long, but. So I guess is it technically feasible that that could provide a spillover in that rare, rare circumstance that it could be engineered to support? If it was paved, I wouldn't care, but I don't want that stuff that they use over there, I don't want to see that expanded anymore in the city. I don't, I don't think it's.
Mr. Prithers?
We're, we're drafting a condition over here that would, I think, maybe meet both goals, uh, perhaps, and putting you on the spot here, but, uh, we might be able to accomplish something that is only used in versus situations, but supports apparatus.
Yeah, I'm good with that, I, I mean, I wouldn't want to see it and have a better idea of it, but conceptionally, I mean, I'm.
Yeah. It didn't mean a multi-use path, but.
Yeah, I mean, that to me, I'm, I'm looking at the church on the east that has a, you know, that, that, we, we did that, I think, on the, the, on the, the, whatever we call, I would call industrial park that was just recently approved, that there was, there was just an emergency secondary access that was feasible in that rare circumstance, so.
Ms. Rosenberg, Mr. Bracken, Mr. Keebler.
So, fellow commissioners, do we have any more from the fire chief, because I really want to talk about.
Yeah, I was going to ask if we have any more for.
Because.
All right, I think you're off the hook for a second.
I'll be over here if you need me.
So, given what the fire chief has said and also my own experience with fallback on planning commission for really terrible parking lots, and I don't see why, like, what's a conflict point, are you, are you referring to possibility of accident, is that what you're?
Well, there's a concept of, of access management, think about Locust Street by, by, by Croker. One of the reasons it's so accident-prone and terrible for bicycles and pedestrians is you've got so many different access points. So the concept of access management is trying to reduce those points of conflict, so there's one entrance and not two or three or four.
Gotcha.
Because each one of those things is a car pulling in and out, crossing over a multi-use path, so that's the principle.
But I would argue that having one entrance also faces, okay, and I don't have like a planning degree or understand, you know, some of the things that you do. But just as a driver in this town, yeah, I agree with you that Locust Street for Kroker has too many of that. And I think part of the problem is not that there's too many, but because there's like too many ways to get to those, if that makes sense. Uh, based on this plan, we're not talking about a lot of different ways to get to these entrances. We're, we're talking about like, this goes forward and then it goes around the building and has a lot of parking. So I don't see it as a, as a similar thing to the Locust Street because of how that parking lot is constructed. But what I see so many times is, is, I mean, let's look at, uh, where the library is, right, of course, we always bring that up. But like, there are not enough entrances to that and they're not wide enough. And, um, or, or I should say there, there's not enough ways to travel through there without a lot of blockage, without the possibility of pedestrians getting hurt, without, you know, I don't know the statistics of that particular development. But what I see on, on twenty-seven is if there were two, I mean, I, I totally trust the fire chief in what he says, both about the multi-use path and about how it'd be more effective to have two entrances, well, as a. Well, as a driver, I also would like to see two entrances because they're, that, that, this is not a large parking lot. And there is not a lot of like pavement in front of the building. So, uh, with that big canopy there and everything, yeah, it's gonna get blocked up with one entrance, I think. So that's where I fall on that. And I wanna talk about the signs real quick, I'm so tired of talking about signs. This is a huge hotel. I completely agree that you should look at like the Hampton Inn, for instance, and see what the size is. Because you can't say what's good for like Burger King signage is gonna be in any kind of proportion with a, with a hotel. You're completely, you know, Mr. Keebler's completely correct in saying that when you have this tiny gate like in the corner of this building, it's, it's gonna look dumb. As well as not providing really any information. And so I would.
And I'm just trying to keep it easy and keep it moving.
Right, right.
That's great, okay, come back with this folks and.
Yeah, exactly.
No problem.
And so, so yeah, so that's, those are the two things that I have to say is I, I hope we can clean up this, the sign code because. It's, it's, I really think it needs to be in proportion to the buildings, this is not the first time that I've.
That's right, formula, here we come.
Yeah. This is not the first time that I felt that, like, like some of these buildings are larger than others. And then I, I completely agree about two entrances, um, not just for safety, well, completely for safety, but also for convenience, so.
Mr. Bracken?
I don't mind two entrances at all, I don't think it would be a problem, they're gonna be a hundred, two hundred feet away from each other, so I don't think they're too close, which I think is the problem on Locust Street. That being said, I don't mind other alternatives, as long as our fire chief is satisfied with the safety of it, that's my biggest concern. Signage, I also, I generally don't care, all I try and do is keep it consistent to the rules that we have and variances that are consistent between similar conditions. Um, so I totally understand it being larger and what you recommended, I think is totally reasonable.
Mr. Keebler?
I wanna come back to fire. If we don't wanna private one, let's put one at least on that side of the road with a grid and a line across it, it's a city item. I mean, it, this needs to be done, okay, this is a conditional use, we're not out of the realm to ask for it. So be put in at the contractor's defense, the size line that supports the fire hydrant and service his, um, sprinklers.
Mr. Raina?
With respect to entrances, I ha, I can't help but say I feel conflicted. And I have the greatest respect for the fire chief and what he's talking about. But the reason I do is because I'm listening to some of the points that Prithrich made. And there's percentages quoted like the number of times being period oh, oh, one, whatever. And I'm, you're, you're speaking about, uh, the, the single entrance has, is, has support. And I'm trying to further understand that in order to make a decision. Would you elaborate on that, just, I'm, I'm not sure that I can.
So I think that my, I guess, I don't know what the language that staff is crafting, but I think agreeing that there should be a secondary emergency access. Like, I think we can all agree on that, it's, the odds of it are small, but I think we would all like to not be locked into a single entrance. The question of whether then the cost of construction and, and all the traffic that a second entrance would generate. Planned around that emergency, emergency access is, so to me, I would love to have some kind of way in which an emergency secondary access were provided without needing that, that additional vehicular entrance. And so to me, it's like, and again, I don't know that I can, we could say that we could require them to have a secondary driveway entrance or we could, I mean, what's the, what's the condition that you're thinking about right now?
So.
May I?
You can answer, but I also, I, I have an option that might alleviate some of this. Rob, Robin.
Okay. Yeah, I think I could share a few thoughts, so, um, I did craft a condition that would be more along the lines of Dr. Prithrich and, and his idea for, um, possibly using the multi-use path as an emergency access point. So, um, a condition could be worded as an emergency access point shall be explored and implemented to the greatest degree possible. Without creating a second vehicular access point or curb cut for regular traffic. That's the way that at least I would word it if it were in line with, um, Dr. Prithrich's proposal. There would probably be another condition I would have to craft it with if it was indeed a true second vehicular access point that was available there for regular traffic on top of emergency access. And I'd also be curious or if, if the commission was inclined to, you know, start basically, uh, in, in, in description ways, start, starting to redesign the site plan. Um, it might be helpful to just get the applicant's perspective as to whether they agree to these conditions as we're writing them.
So one, one suggestion or thought I had is half of a pork chop. So if you make a northbound in only, the fire truck doesn't need to get out quickly.
Could you repeat, would you mind repeating that?
A northbound runway right turn in.
Yes.
So it, it reduces the, uh, conflict point because you don't have vehicles coming out. The fire truck can take its sweet old time coming out, it needs to get in. So if you put that to Mr. Keebler's on the, on what was technically would be the southern point and it was in. Or even some marriage of the two ideas where there is a curb cut, but it is, you know, a paved sidewalk that the truck could get over if it needed to. You could put it at the south side and it's, it's not the impact of a traditional com, uh, conflict point.
Can, can I, like, why can't there be a second, like, why?
With outbound traffic, you can, you can hit a biker. With inbound traffic, the biker will see the inbound car, um, or, or a conflict point. Plus the volume of traffic going in and out, it's gonna be certain times of the day, so you're, you're not gonna have consistent traffic where you would.
I got you, I just, the reason I say that so emphatically is, I mean, this is Walmart. And this is like a major road and I respect bikers and pedestrians.
There's more people going in and out of Burger King's one driveway than will go in and out of this on a daily basis.
This is, I mean, I keep comparing it to Dunkin' Donuts is kind of, this is a hotel, people come in and, and then they leave. I mean, I guess what I would say is that I think that there seems to be consensus among the commission that we need to look at a secondary emergency access. Whether or not we hear this level, because there's multiple steps, right? It's gonna go to council, be a secondary, additional step. So if we can set what the requirement, like, what Dick is saying about the sign that we set what the goal language is, we set what the goal language is here more like, and then not engineer the entrances tonight, I guess is what I'm saying. And, and then see, and the council will have two cracks at this to see, and the, and the applicant would have an idea of how to solve the problem. So I guess I would like a qualitative condition rather than a trying to redesign.
We need a new one, and I have a suggestion. There are ten, uh, conditions by the staff recommendations. And I think we are talking about number one, number four. And then number eleven, which is my fire.
I have number eleven.
Dick Keebler has my target.
I have number eleven.
Now. Why don't we just sit here and take a straw vote? How many are in favor of changing one to allow one monument to code, two wall signs, similar, same size as Hampton Inn? Not to exceed, not to exceed, or leave it like it is?
I'm okay with one as, as you've described. Are we okay with that?
I will support that. I mean, we could say proportional to recently constructed hotels or something.
I wouldn't say proportional, let's go back for a final, so. So I guess it'd like we're approving. The other thing too is Hampton Inn from one side is more than a hundred feet from the street, so just keep that in mind as well.
Okay, so what's your second?
Number four. Okay, possible widening or, uh, that can go by itself, but the multi-use path, okay, or second entrance? How many are in favor of the second entrance?
I don't care. I need an access point, I don't care what it is, once the chief's satisfied, that means.
Right, we refer a second emergency access point.
But that's not what we're saying.
Yeah, that's what we're saying, the two choices. One is an emergency access and one is a second entrance.
Emergency access is more important. Emergency's more important to me.
It, that's not sufficient for me because we could have a multi-access that doesn't meet the needs of our chief as stated previously. So my condition is the chief signs off on it. Which gives the option of all these things, right?
I agree with Mr. Bracken, I'm more concerned with, uh, the feasibility. And, and one thing I will say, and I appreciate your comments. The probability of something happening is low, but the impact of something happening is high. So I have a one in a trillion chance of winning Mega Millions, but if I win it, wow, that's a heck of an impact.
Okay, so then I just wanna make sure I have correct in interpreting what you said, which is you would be in favor of a second entrance.
No.
No, no, we would be in favor of any solution that the chief is okay with safety wise.
So what, so no, you do not want a second entrance, no, you do not want a second entrance, and no, you do not. Okay.
Okay.
No, you do not.
I like, I like Mr. Moore's condition.
There you go.
Mr. Moore, could you read your condition again, please?
That's what he's trying to do.
Hold on a sec, Mr. Moore?
Yes, Mr. Chair. So the condition that I wrote specified that an emergency access point shall be explored. And I would add explored between, I guess, staff and the applicant. And implemented to the greatest degree possible without creating a second vehicular access point for regular traffic.
If you add approval of the chief, you got, you got me.
And I actually want them to have the option of having a second entrance.
Thank you.
Shall we say, explore between community development staff, the fire chief, and the applicant?
Yeah. But not opposed to a second entrance, I just don't need one.
Get rid of this explore thing.
A secondary road, emergency access.
A second helping design or emergency access point agreeable to the fire chief, these would be provided, period.
Love it.
Could, I'd say that real quick.
Go ahead.
Yeah, and I agree completely, low percentage things, yes, they're low percentage, but if they're catastrophic, they're catastrophic. Don't allow for that to the best of your ability. Also, a lot of times when we bring up the percentages of things happening, they're not independent. The same thing that brings people there for fire could be the thing that actually prevents you from getting that line across, so.
So we all agree that we need to have a secondary emergency fire access, alright?
We do all agree on that.
We all agree on that, to be, you know, and, and to be designed in conjunction with staff and, and the applicant and approved by fire chief.
So we'll talk about access rather than.
Yeah, so I'm gonna rein this back in because we have so much more fun and excitement. Um, so, did you capture that, Mr. Moore?
I think so.
The eleventh condition, uh, that. I agree with Mr. Keebler on is the, uh, fire hydrant, the city, uh, maintained fire hydrant that effectively dicks hydrant.
That the applicant shall install the fire hydrant to city's specifications on the north side of the road near the entrance.
That is a solution, I totally support that.
I think that also reduces the risk and possibility.
I think we need applicant agreement to that, and I've never had a conditional use condition like that of that level of grade.
So why, well, so here's a question though, they have to run the fire line, we're just saying it has to be, instead of saying you can run a hose, which could be a garden hose, we're saying you have to run a five foot.
I'll guarantee you, if you were to west check the township, you'd have surrounding that whole building, period.
So I.
We're much too lenient here with that.
Jason, please go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say, it depends on what's consistent and what's fair, even though I think it's a great idea. If this is brought up new for the first time and it's a demand that we haven't put on other developers, that's not fair, but also they might be amenable to it, it might not be an issue.
Well, I also think we haven't had a situation, uh, all the hotels that have been built, which some have been newer than twenty years are all, uh, they're not in an area like this where it's underdeveloped.
So what we are talking about, am I correct if I had it, what, what Zach has written here, is that we're talking about a second, second, uh, not necessarily a second exit, but a second, which you have talked about.
We're, we're, no, we're actually past that.
We're past that, yeah, we're moving on, we moved on to the hydration.
But I think it's related and I think that why, it is a level of granularity, but we could be talking about where the driveways should go in order to prevent, you know, for fire safety. And I think that if, if a hydrant also enables us, them to do the plan like this, that addresses, mitigates the concern of a hotel and a.
And one can argue, uh, hydrant line is cheaper than, uh, curb cut and other things. Um, there is one thing and, and, um, I do wanna wrap this up, but, uh, it's between Mr. Keebler and Mr. Kropenbaker, there was a really good observation. Uh, I don't think this has to be a condition, but I would really implore staff and the applicant. If there is the hope, desire, and expectation that there will be buses, I know with, um, certain properties that is an issue. Um, I've simply because it's the easiest one to explain, the Elms doesn't have bus parking in close proximity. So if that was something that could be, um, validated, because if they are gonna have that, uh, up there, knowing Ray's way in, in those areas quite well, there's no parking on College Corner Pike. And I just wanna make sure, um, this goes back to my seven foot parking garage pickup truck example of four years ago, is, you know, visitor to town doesn't know our town. So for us to have things that are hard to figure out on a spot, that's not really welcome.
Well, and I don't think it'll realize their level of conditions, but we have encouraged and people have worked out mutual kind of parking arrangements with their neighbors and down there's the church adjacent. And so just as.
You have neighbors, there are parking, and I think some kind of mutual agreement with them would just be mutually beneficial, but we don't need to make the condition.
Yeah, I just, I, you had a, they had really good points, I wanna make sure we capture. So, herding in the cats, any new issues, unresolved issues, or anything that people are gonna die tonight about? So I have a motion to approve. And I will clarify, and we have a second, that is a motion to approve with changes to staff recommendation one. Uh, Mr. Moore, I'm not sure how you worded that, but as I understand it, is the monuments, uh, with height variation. And two building signs not to exceed the size that has been previously approved, for example, at the Hampton Inn, is how I understand condition number one. You, I believe, did you rewrite number four? Or was that an additional?
Maybe it's an additional, maybe it's better as an addition.
Is it a better as an additional?
Yeah, number four is about the emergency access point. You could probably leave number four alone because that talks about the main entrance.
So I will, only because we prefer doing it as number eleven, I would like to keep number eleven, the city hydrant. City spec hydrant as described by Mr. Keebler at the entrance as number eleven.
The vehicle entrance.
At the vehicle entrance, and I would like to entertain, and if you could read into the record, number twelve.
And number twelve would be the condition that I had read twice already. Um, so the, the way it's worded right now is an emergency access point shall, well. It says shall be explored between community development staff, the fire chief, and the applicant. And implemented to the greatest degree possible without creating a second vehicular access point or curb cut for regular traffic. But it does, it doesn't sound like that matches.
That's why I wanted you to read it.
Okay.
Many of us want the option of if the developer would like to create a second entrance, I think there's probably a majority here that would approve of that.
I don't want them to be, I want them to have, I think, at least three or four of us want them to have that option, and Mr. Keebler was emphatic about the word explorer, it's a little too loose.
So how about a secondary emergency fire access be designed in collaboration between?
If that's inclusive of a normal.
Trying to eliminate, check it out.
You are.
No, I wait. I, I, I'm saying is that.
So just a point of order, it is Mr. Keebler's motion, so. Uh, let's, let's let him clarify, and if you'd like to offer.
I want number twelve to say that the applicant shall provide an emergency access point or a second vehicular entrance. As.
In consultation with.
In consultation with the fire chief and city staff.
Excuse me, so it's one or the other?
One or the other.
What you've talked about, it's just, it's clear to me, I was.
One or the other.
But I now get it, you're saying one or another, make that absolutely clear, so at least I know what I really am.
Is that clear as much, sir?
Actually, I think that came through quite clear. So what I just heard is the applicant shall provide a secondary emergency access point or second curb cut in consultation with. Um, community development staff, the fire chief, and, well, I'm sorry, it starts with the applicant, so in consultation. or second curb cut in consultation with um, community development staff, the fire chief, and, well, I'm sorry, it starts with the applicant, so in consultation with city staff. We'll just call it city staff, which includes a fire chief.
I, I would like to specify, no, no, uh, not, not trying to be flippant, but I do want it to say, community development staff and uh, fire chief. Cause city staff could be the person who does payroll.
And we get him into the solution.
Yes. Alright, so if we, Mr. Keebler, it is your motion, do you, do you agree with the twelve conditions? We do, Mr. Dana seconded.
Alright.
I think he did, but I think it was a while ago. We've discussed so much.
Would you like us to still second that?
Yes, I would indeed. And I want it part of the record as well. Perfect.
Mr. Perry, please add this.
Dr. Prithrich?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Dana?
Yes.
Mr. Keebler?
Absolutely.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Watt?
Yes.
And we got lost in the nitty-gritty, but thank you for your proposed investment in our community.
Good forward to it.
Um, yes, we are very excited about this. This is a high-quality development, uh, so, yeah.
I'm kind of messing with the AI right now, that's, that's.
I noticed that.
This is why we need AI to be.
Alright, uh, as the chair, I'm gonna exercise privilege. We are gonna take a five-minute recess, uh, so that folks can uh get their wits about them, and we will very quickly add, uh. It's nine fifteen according to the actual clock, not that one, so nine sixteen according to the broken clock. Alright, I'll call the meeting back to order at nine sixteen and change. So, at this point, we're gonna resume new business with PC twenty twenty-two dash zero three. Owl's Landing is a final plan development for eighty-six single-family lots. John Bayer of Bayer Becker and Todd Holmes are the applicant. So at this time, I will entertain a motion to enter public. And with the anticipatory motion and second, we have Mr. Dana and Ms. Rosenberg. All of us in favor?
Aye.
And the opposition?
Seeing none. Mr. Moore, you have the floor.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Watt. This is the last case of the evening. This is a final plan development for the Owl's Landing residential community. This is case number PC dash twenty twenty-two dash zero three. The applicant is Todd Holmes LLC. Engineer is Bayer Becker. This is under the care of John Bayer. The site area involves, so we're talking about a twenty-two acre site. This is along Brookville Road. This is obviously one you've seen before as a preliminary. Um, site frontage is a little over thirteen hundred feet along Brookville. Current zoning classification is R one B, single-family, medium-density residential. Um, it's already been approved for uh preliminary plan development, so that is of course in effect in a sense. And the proposal is more or less matching to that of preliminary, which is for the eighty-six single-family lots, and these will be located on private streets within the site. So here is a look at the site location. So this is west of Muskoff Farms, south of Community Park, and here is Brookville Road, right here. Zoning classifications is pretty much all, it's all residential in this area. R one B is a shared classification between Muskoff Farms and the future Owl's Landing community. R one A zoning is up to the north for the Community Park, as well as for the Long Meadow subdivision, which is further east and to the north. Okay, so here is the project timeline thus far. So Planning Commission first saw a concept plan for Owl's Landing. This was back in April of last year. So there wasn't a formal vote on that. I think that was actually our last virtual meeting that we had, uh, back in April. And then the preliminary plan development and subdivision, so there were really two distinct items there, approval of the subdivision and approving the plan development. But they were considered more or less as one, one proposal, one bucket, and uh, those were proposed in tandem. Planning Commission made a recommendation that was favorable on those in December of last year. So that has since gone, uh, this year in January to council for its first and second readings. So that was approved on January the eighteenth for the preliminary PD and subdivision for this proposal. And then, uh, the next step in sequence, so there's the construction drawings that have all of the very detailed sort of engineering specs and and things when it comes to the infrastructure that's gonna be going into the development. Um, the stormwater, the streets, the utilities, et cetera, those are all conveyed in those drawings. That's an administrative review, and that happens regardless of whether something's a plan development or not. It comes as part of the subdivision review. So that was submitted for administrative review in March, so March twenty-eighth. And the final PD is what the Planning Commission is reviewing tonight. So these are kind of going together in sequence. Um, one being administrative, one being more discretionary. Um, so one ultimately is gonna inform the other, so whatever this final PD ends up being, wants it approved, that will inform sort of the final zoning comments, if you will, on the construction drawings. So Planning Commission reviewing the final PD tonight, future council review for that. The final subdivision will just take a council review. Um, and that has yet to be submitted, but I believe it will be submitted quite soon, um, for council review that as well, possibly in tandem with this final PD. Okay, so here is a look at the site aerial. So the scope of a final PD review is much more limited than would be for preliminary. What we're mainly checking for is to make sure that there, if there were conditions, uh, requirements that were specified as part of preliminary approval, are those conditions and requirements being met? And secondly, does the final plan conform substantially to the preliminary? Those are the two key items that we're looking for here, so it's not a very involved review at this stage, uh, but there are a few differences that I'd like to point out. So, uh, this is starting with the preliminary plan, so this is the one that was approved January eighteenth by council. So that's the layout right there. And then switching to the final plan, so if I go back and forth, you can see pretty much identical, and I did check each, each lot line. Um, they are all identical, except there's like three lots right over here that shifted boundaries just a little bit, but we're talking about a nearly identical plan in this case. Sometimes with plan developments, you can get a very conceptual preliminary. The final is a little bit more refined. In this case, there was a very clear vision from the start, and the plans are pretty much almost one in the same to one another, but just a little bit more detail that's being provided now, especially when it comes to the landscaping thing, which is being shown here at this point. Uh, before I move on to the next slide, I just want to mention also, we did receive just this week a revision to this very plan that would not be in your packet, but I believe the change is minor enough that we can sort of roll it into the council review or into the council packet, and I'll just explain what that is. So there are these little strips of what would have been HOA land that would fall behind the individual lots along the northern boundary and the western boundary. The intent is to make those lots deep to the point where they're coming, uh, the private ownership is going straight up to the western property line and the northern property line. So the HOA is not gonna actually own those tiny little strips in that area. We still will make sure that there's conservation easements that go into place in accordance with the preliminary approval. That will come at the final plat stage, because that's when we're checking for easements and things like that. Uh, but I just wanted to make the commission aware of that's a potential change that you're not seeing in your packet right now, but that will, um, hopefully ultimately move forward once it it goes to council, should it go to council. This will in no way diminish the uh, open space, the calculable open space. So those little strips don't technically count toward the open space requirement, which I think was waived a little bit. I think it went from twenty percent to fourteen percent uh, with the preliminary, so eliminating those strips in no way influences in terms of um, compliance from a code standpoint. It's just a better for practicality that the people that own those individual units along those streets will just have the entire depth behind them as their backyard, leading up to the adjacent properties, those being the ones to the west here and the Community Park to the north. Um, so I'm gonna show you some closer detail as it relates to the landscaping, because that was discussed at length at the preliminary stage. And the discussions dealt with the buffer that's along Brookville Road, which is to contain some mounding and some landscaping, as well as the eastern border with Muskoff Farms. We did hear from some residents of Muskoff Farms that attended the first uh, Planning Commission hearing for the preliminary. And there was a condition put in place that the landscaping plan be revisited, so that we're um, hopefully seeing a greater degree of landscaping. I think that's quite the case here, based on the plans that have been submitted by the applicant. So this is a closer look at the landscaping along the trail, so the applicant has since added a number of plantings here. The mounding is in place there. I'd also like to point out, so there's the red dash line, that's delineating the future right-of-way line. There's also this green dash line, so that would be a trail easement. So the trail itself, which will be built by the city, again, that's a public project, that's part of the Oats system, um, phase four of the Oats uh, trail system. And so that kind of weaves itself back and forth between what would be right-of-way down here and what would be trail easement up here. And so those will be improvements that are done at private expense, but it'll be done more or less within the public domain, right? Because it'll be um, nestled up against this public project. So there is a condition that talks about sort of the sequencing of that and sort of waiting for the service department's authorization to go ahead and start the work, because we don't want to have it be a situation where some of this work is done, and then by nature, when that trail comes in, all of a sudden work has to be torn back up or redone. Um, so that's really the reason for that, that condition there. So this crisscrossing or overlapping, if you will, between what is ultimately a private project in Owl's Landing with a public project, which is the trail, which of course preceded any of the, the discussions or submission of any of this, um, any of this residential proposal for Owl's Landing. So now I'm gonna visit the eastern side of the site, so the buffer area that would exist between the Owl's Landing lots and the lots that currently exist along Autumn Drive and Muskoff Farms. So this is a look along the eastern boundary, so there's a number of deciduous and evergreen plantings that are now being shown along there. Um, there's also notes for existing vegetation to remain in this area as well. So, uh, we think that, uh, the condition that was applied to the preliminary approval is being satisfied with these new landscaping details that have now been provided. Um, and I'd also like to hit on the additional landscaping details that have been provided for the central open space, so almost like a little central park area where, uh, this trail segment i- that has been planned and shown to be built up to the Community Park property line. Uh, it's gonna kind of wander its way through the middle of the site here. There would be the open space here. So zooming in on the details there, so there's a number of plantings that are also shown in, in the little pockets, little half-moon shaped areas. So, so, uh, some, some landscape areas. There's the gathering space, which is in the center, and so there's planks around there as well. Um, so staff feels that these details are sufficient as well. Okay, um, so the recommendation is for approval, um, not as many.
Conditions with this one, I don't, oh, actually, there is ten conditions, so there's, there's quite a few.
I take that back. So I will go through each of these and explain them. So condition number one is a, is a pretty typical condition that we will um, apply to plan development proposals that are also subdivisions, because subdivisions take some time to come to fruition. The code normally only allows a one-year horizon for a project to be realized, to be built out completely. That is not realistic in this case. So five years is what we've landed on in the past, so we'd like to propose that again for Owl's Landing. Um, condition number two, it talks about the mounding and landscaping that I mentioned and kind of the sequencing of those different construction elements with respect to the Oats project. Condition number three talks about, so that north-south trail segment that goes through the central park area, the open space area. Um, what the city engineer has requested is that be built in its entirety between the Oats segment and the park property line. be built in its entirety between the Oates segment and the park property line as part of the first phase of the project. If I go back to the plan for just a moment, and I apologize, I didn't call it out very well, but the phase one boundary, which they've identified as block A, that's the terminology that they're going for. So block A and block B. So phase one would be in this area right here that I'm highlighting with my laser. So this trail would extend outside of that first phase boundary and up and go toward the community park site. So the developer, the applicant, has agreed to construct that portion of the trail as part of phase one, even though this block B area, the phase two area, none of the other infrastructure will go in at that time. And that's really a great crucial piece to go in as soon as possible, because that's going to provide a nice vital link that ultimately the city could fulfill and kind of plug the gap here to connect into the community park trail system. So we're appreciative of that. So that's what condition number three was all about. Condition number four basically is talking about easements. So there were a number of details that showed up in some form or another on the final PD that relate to all different kinds of easements, talking about public access easements, utility easements, trailer easements, conservation easements. There's a number of purposes. Just to keep it cleaner, we would just prefer that all that be dealt with at the final plat stage. So this is just to make sure that there's some clarity here, where if there's an easement that happened to be shown on the final PD that contradicted or didn't correspond with what's on the plat, that we're just going to operate off of what's on the plat, and that will prevail. And actually, I think the latest plan that has been submitted this week did remove a lot of those extraneous details. So I think condition four will suit us well moving forward to the final plat stage. Condition number five is just sort of reminding or reiterating the fact that for a conservation easement, you shouldn't have any construction activity taking place within that easement. So the exact provisions that are tied to that easement will need to be part of the review for the final plat itself. Condition number six, so staff and the applicant, we are working through the lighting details at this time to determine the lamp pole locations along the streets, make sure that there's adequate lighting of key areas like crossings of sidewalks, the multi-use path crossings, the cluster mailbox locations, making sure that those key areas that need to be well-lit are being lit appropriately. So that's what condition six is there for. Condition number seven deals with the street infrastructure details being revised as necessary. We are working toward getting those necessary details wrapped up as part of the construction drawings. So that has to do with the accessibility for emergency vehicles, mainly at the end of the three different stubs that will go to phase two. So making sure that if, if phase one, on the off chance if phase one is the only phase that gets built, can it stand alone? Can it function on its own? And can the turnaround ability for emergency vehicles be guaranteed? So that can be guaranteed in the form of a, like a bulb, sort of a turn, turnaround, temporary turnaround, or like a T turnaround at the end of those steps. So I think that'll be, we'll be able to work through that by being empowered with this condition here, condition seven, and working through those details, making sure we satisfy our fire chief, so we have adequate accessibility for this development. Condition number eight, so we asked a couple of times of the applicant, are you planning any gateway signage, any entryway sort of monument sign or anything like that? At this point, they're not planning anything like that, but I figured it would be helpful to go ahead and just for clarity's sake, mention it, that if it does come to pass down the line, that we would probably want to consider it as an amendment to the plan development. So looking at the sign details, looking at the location and things like that would be done on a more discretionary basis. So that's what condition eight is designed to do. Condition number nine is just kind of reminding of the necessary steps that would have to happen once the final, final PD is approved. We'll need approved construction drawings, financial security for the public and private improvements. That's a must for any subdivision to make sure that we've got the, the necessary bonding in place. The final plat, of course, will need to be approved by council and ultimately recorded and have all the necessary easements in place. And then the HOA declaration and restrictions, which were included in your packet. I don't believe there's been too many changes, if any, since the original set that you would have seen with the preliminary, but those are under review right now with our law director and with staff to make sure everything is good to go there. And then finally, condition number ten just reiterates that there were a number of conditions that went with the preliminary per ordinance number thirty-six fifty-eight, and so we want those to remain in full force and effect to the extent that they wouldn't be overwritten or sort of superseded by nature of this particular approval of the final PD. So that is, that concludes all the conditions that I have for the commission. I am happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Moore?
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
At this time, if Mr. Bayer or...
I'm not sure who's speaking or how. You're always welcome, Mr. Bayer, but I don't know if you're having to guess.
I appreciate that. John Bayer, Bayer Becker, at One Ten South College Avenue, Oxford, Ohio. Here for any questions you might have, but don't have any specific info to add to Zach's presentation. Todd Hall with Todd Holmes is here as well. If you have specific questions for him, he may have an item due to add to the discussion. Thanks.
I don't see any questions.
You're welcome to come up.
So far, so simple, right?
You're, you're welcome to come up and share your thoughts.
Sure. Thank you for that. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. First and foremost, thank you for your commitment tonight. Another long night, ensuring that tomorrow's Oxford is a better tomorrow, so thank you. Mr. Moore and Mr. Perry have been amazing to work with. It's been a long ride, but it's been a great ride. They protect the details of the city, and I want to make sure that you know that from me standing here, the, the I's are dotted and the T's are crossed with your staff. Just so you know, the trail easement has been deeded to the city of Oxford. You now own that piece of property for the Oates Trail Extension. I gave you my word at the last meeting. I honor my word, and I just wanted to reassure you that you have it now. Just to touch real quick, I'll make this real short and simple. I went under contract on this property seventeen months ago. And by the time I'm able to put a blade in the ground, it'll be between twenty-three and twenty-five months. And that has been a struggle for me. In my business, time is money, unfortunately. And I just wanted to let you know that I am here if the members or any of the employees want to have conversations about, is there any way that still protects the city and can be a little bit more faster on the timeline for private businesses like myself? I'm just a small business. I'm not a big business. This was a, a, a project that I've already purchased. And you know, Lord, Lord forbid if I would have had to obtain outside financing. I don't believe that I could have got a loan to buy this property from a financial institute like a bank without having zoning. So I don't think this project would have been possible for me if I wasn't able to just go ahead and buy the farm. But I bought it, bought, bought it in good faith, and I was able to, so I'm able to stand here today. But I did want to let you know that where I'm sitting, it, it does create a, a little different scenario than I'm used to. So I'm always open for conversation with that. And I just have one more thing, real quick. Is there any way that this property can have the opportunity to have a secondary emergency access point, just like the last one? Since it meets the exact same qualifications?
Fire chief likes that one.
He knew it was coming. While that discussion was going, I believe he knew it was coming. But in all due fairness, it's the same amount of density. It's the, it, it has the trail on it. I don't see financially why this project would take the burden of a full curb cut if the, the same thing could be done at a different property. I, I don't see the difference. If there is a difference, I respectfully would, would entertain it, but I, I just don't get it. And I, I would be a bad businessman if I didn't stand here and, and at least say that or ask for that, but it's not, you know, it is what it is at this point, but I, I think it's only fair to myself that I, that I do voice my opinion on that.
Did you do what, pardon me?
I'm sorry?
Did you, the last thing you said?
Just to voice my opinion. That's my responsibility as a small business. I saw the opportunity that is the exact same, in my opinion, from everything I heard tonight. And I just wanted the opportunity to at least express how I felt about it and see if there's an opportunity to have the same option, to have a secondary emergency access point explored.
No, we...
I think the biggest difference is commercial versus residential.
No, I agree with you.
I would, I...
I haven't made second impressions.
Yeah. And, and I, in all due fairness, I, I agree with the, the commercial and the residential. And I think that there's actually more burden on the commercial than the residential, in my opinion. But that's just my opinion. That's all I got. I hope you have a wonderful night, and thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, sir. We can get a check-in and checkout time for residents and residents. All right. I will, I will entertain any comments from the public at this point on this business item. Mr. Krippenbaker?
Just one more time.
Seth Krippenbaker.
Assistant City Mayor. I think, you know, just broadly, this development represents a category of, of high need, both presently and moving forward as it relates to residential development throughout the city of Oxford. And it's been touched on a number of times, but kind of the full scope of the impact of the Oates Trail Easement, it really kept us on track. And, and being able to develop a phase four, keep us in line with grant funding, and moving forward for the kind of full development of the, so really, this, this project allow for that, that development of that trail, which, you know, has a number of equity and economic impacts on our community. So certainly appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do you want to state your name and your address?
Certainly.
I really appreciate it.
Mike Laser. I live at six-six-seven-eight Brookville Road, which would be to the property just the west of this in the township. I've submitted comments before for the initial hearing, and like to make some comments today. First one is the financial viability of this project. Since the beginning of this year, mortgage rates have gone up sixty-six percent. Building materials have gone up by twenty percent in the last year. None of this seems like it's going to stop anytime soon. Obviously, owning the property next door, my family's chief concern is if this gets halfway done and they run out of money, I've got basically a construction zone sitting next to my property from here on out. So it's, when you have downturns like you do today, and I saw this when I was living in San Diego in ninety-one, where people just walked away from construction projects as the housing market collapsed, then I would be extremely afraid of what would happen here. Next one's a minor point, the trail. The diagram, for some reason, still shows the trail continuing to the west of the property. I don't think that's happening anymore. So just so everybody's clear on that. And then finally, biggest one is infrastructure. Brookville Road along this section is fifty-five miles per hour. If anybody was out there by the park last week or last two weeks while the soccer tournament was going on, you can see how bad things get backed up now and how fast people come down that road. And now you're going to put eighty-eight more houses out there without basically building up the road at all. It's, it's going to turn into a nightmare. In addition, the vegetation and the things that you're looking to put along Brookville Road are going to decrease those sightlines. How far anybody can see up or down that road there? Now, in the morning, when the folks are coming from, in from Indiana, fifty-five, sixty miles an hour, you're just asking for a lot of accidents to happen, and none of them are going to be good. So those are our concerns, and I thank you for the opportunity to bring them forward.
The city attempted to get the speed limit reduced in that area. But the problem is when in the township, the county road, the county engineer sets the speed limits.
And I...
He wouldn't reduce.
Right. And I understand.
This is going to allow it to get reduced.
Okay. Well, but until it does, you're looking at a lot of issues.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments for members of the public? All right. Seeing none, I'll accept the motion.
Move to close public hearing.
I'll accept the motion to close public hearings. So I have a second before the first. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Seeing none. All right, discussion. Mr. Keebler?
I'm going to approve.
Second.
With the conditions that show.
I'd like to make friendly amendment. To, I believe it was condition eight. Can you get back to that? Which one? I believe it's condition eight. So...
Page one oh three?
Uh, yeah. Page one oh three. I would like to end that condition at final PD. The reason I say that is we have a lot of discussions about signage, and being that there is a minor amendment process, a minor amendment would qualify for something as a slide.
Why is there required approval? As long as it gets city code. I mean, I don't, I don't like the idea hanging above here.
Well, I'm not saying that, but part of what I'm saying is we did have extensive, extensive discussions on the site, the road, so...
But I think city staff can handle it.
All right. Well, that's my friendly amendment.
And I think I, is it my motion?
He moved.
Okay.
You moved.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, I'm going to close public hearing. Yeah.
I just wanted to comment briefly on what's Mr. Keebler, I want to leave him aside.
On page one oh one, item number fourteen.
I had a question about, it shouldn't take long, but it starts out about the proposed construction, well, that is all in complete elimination of existing material. Okay. So at the end, it says, "Though much of the impacts have now been determined and subsequently approved as a result of the preliminary PD and subdivision view, there are still some outstanding considerations with respect to the conservation easements to be put in place along the northern and western boundaries of the site." I'm just trying to figure out in my mind what some of these outstanding considerations are, or whether we have already discussed them and I missed it.
So just a point of order. We have a motion and a second. I've made an amendment. So before we get that new discussion or we, we go to discuss, do you accept the amendment on page? So the paradox we have here is Mr. Dana has questions on the decision criteria, which would preclude our usual of, unless there's any objections. So because the decision criteria have to be addressed and fulfilled...
He just asked questions.
I know, but we can't go into that soft-sweet night without any clarification, because you can't say that we believe the decision standards if there is a question of one or others.
Where are you on it?
I'm, I'm, I'm saying, at the bottom of page one oh one, number fourteen. The, the phrase, "some outstanding considerations," I look at that and say, well, what considerations are the talking top that have to be, that have to be addressed? And put in place along the northern and western boundaries of, of the site. These are best if we're to negotiate the time in the final division.
Can I have your gentleman?
Maybe that answers the question. Can you answer it?
Yeah, I can speak to that. So I think I hinted at this a little bit in my presentation. So one of the requirements, one of the conditions for the preliminary talked about conservation restrictions along the northern property boundary and western property boundary. We did get some details. I think there were some labels that were applied to the original final PD plan that was submitted, indicating conservation easements, and I think it was only noted along the northern boundary. But I think the condition about the easements being, we're more or less kicking the can a little bit. We're kicking it to the final subdivision, because that's when it's most appropriate to observe those boundaries, the resulting boundaries for the northern and western property lines, as well as the conservation restrictions that are tied... as well as the conservation restrictions that are tied to those boundaries. So in other words, what are the provisions exactly as far as what you can and cannot do in those easements? What can you do, if anything, to the vegetation that may be within those easements? So those are the types of considerations that I think would be best suited for the final subdivision review that's reviewing the plat, as opposed to the stage that we're at right now.
That completely satisfied me. I simply saw it and, sir, thank you very much. That's it, done.
Where are we having discussion or are we voting? Because normally, we have discussion, then we make a motion.
We can do it either, I mean...
We do it either way.
Yeah, I know, I'm kind of making a point. We normally have discussion, so I would respectfully request that the motion and the second are withdrawn, so that we can go with status quo and have a discussion, because technically, once those are made, we have to vote.
I don't think that really makes Roberts. I really think in Roberts, you have to...
Privilege of the chair. Privilege of the chair and historical application. So if you want to have discussion, let's have discussion.
No, I understand that. I asked a question, it was answered, and I said I'm through.
I know, that wasn't a you, I was just saying, if we're going to have discussion, let's have discussion. And we'll pause the motion and the second.
Nope.
Okay, that's fine. All right, so we have a motion and a second. So as I understand it, it would be to accept staff recommendations as presented and with the agreement that all fourteen decision criteria are met without objection from anyone on the commission. Mr. Perry, would you call the roll?
Mr. Dana?
Yes.
Dr. Petherich?
Yes.
Mr. Bracken?
Yes.
Mr. Keebler?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. what?
Yes.
All right. And before anyone jumps the gun on a motion to adjourn, we have something for Mr. Keebler.
I just want to say that this will be my last planning commission meeting. My term expires the end of June. We're going to be on a family vacation at your next meeting, so I won't be here. I think I've done my part. Thirty-four years on the fire department, eight years on city council, which for I was mayor, and a total of ten years on the planning commission. So I'm going to take a step back and say, time for somebody else to step up. I will miss it. I've enjoyed it. I hope city's a better place because of what I've taken part in. We've had our disagreements over the time, but everything is improved. And I appreciate that. So that's it, thank you.
You have done some rare things that other people might not have, but you have, so we appreciate it.
Aye, yes.
Well, and since I spent many, many, many a Tuesday night sometimes arguing with Dick. No one has ever brought more of their A-game to a meeting than Dick in terms of attention to detail. He's not afraid to say no to things or to put his foot down. And I've always found that even when there's, I don't want to even call disagreement, it's, in the end, the city's better because of diversity of opinion we argue about stuff, and we arrive at a better compromise solution. So it's hard to imagine a planning commission without Dick Keebler, but the city has received more than its service from you, so it's been an honor.
And I just want to thank you, because the first time I ever got involved with the city was on the charter review mission with Dick. Man, that was a great first impression. He...
That was done, didn't we?
We did, and it was good. And, no, you've done great, and we all appreciate you, so... Would you like the honors? To adjourn?
Absolutely.
We are adjourned.